Okay, just a second. So, what happens? Do they, I mean, do they educate you?
Yeah, there's a lot of seminars, different, just like the annual New Hampshire municipal one down on Radisson.
Is that a good use of your time?
Absolutely. There's not only the networking, but there's probably, well, every Primex customer goes there. It's very good, yeah.
So, can I move on?
Can I just?
Please.
I didn't, and it may very well be, this probably is a very valid thing to do, but I, as a Select Board member, would just like to have an idea of those kinds of things so that I would know that.
I sent you an email. When did I send the email out?
I don't know.
Oh, I'll have to look at, oh, maybe I've got it on me.
An email on...
Telling you when I was going, yeah. Oh, you, you mean?
I didn't, I don't recall.
Yeah.
Seeing anything on that. But anyway, is it...
It was sent out on May the 2nd, Friday, May 2nd.
Did anybody know that?
To all this Select Board.
That you were going to be at a Primex conference?
Yes.
And it say three-day Primex conference?
It said, "Primex Conference in Whitefield. Conference begins at 4:00 PM on the 20th and finishes at 3:00 PM on the 22nd."
Okay.
Yep.
Is it possible to do, and maybe I'm over-analysing it, if I am, then that's fine. Is it reasonable to have like a calendar of some sort? Not just to have an idea of days in the office, days out of the office, just so we know what's going on?
Yeah, I mean...
Is that a reasonable request? Or am I, I mean, I don't really care.
I notify Pat at the beginning of the month where, you know, and I...
Yeah, like I do an Outlook calendar, just so that I know where I'm at for each.
Could you provide us with a calendar?
Yeah.
Do your own calendar, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, he's done this regularly.
Yeah.
It's kind of regular. And like Friday, was a Town Administrator Conference you went to?
No, it was the Municipal Managers Association of New Hampshire.
Okay. So, all the Town Administrators, Town Managers, were there?
Yeah, varies, yeah. Yeah, not everybody goes, but yeah.
Selectmen ever go to those things?
No.
Okay. That's why I'm asking.
I have two other things, quickly. One is, don't forget, on May 29th, we also had that meeting at 8:00.
Yes, 8:30, I thought. I don't know why so late, but 8:30, that meeting on the evening of May 29th, correct?
I had written down 8, so I could be very wrong.
8:30 PM.
Yes.
Is it 8:30? Okay.
29, yeah.
Okay, the other, the other thing is, when we're liaisons, I think it was Steve that mentioned, I don't know, somebody mentioned we should give reports. I just want to say with the Joint Last Committee, we are doing inspections again, and at the meeting, I specifically stressed, we need to get them done. So, Thursday, we're doing the Booster Club. We're going to be inspecting the Booster Club, and then two or three weeks after that, we'll be inspecting the transfer station, because we haven't done that. As soon as we inspect the Booster Club, our report will be a report of how we did.
At the next meeting, I'll do a, just a quick, one-page summary of the CIP, where the CIP's at, so as a, kind of update everybody as to what we're doing and what we're working on.
The Planning Board issues their minutes. They're all working late, so...
Okay, I just wanted to bring this up real quickly. Saw it on TV two nights ago, and I know it's going around right now. The Northern Border Regional Commission has made a decision to give grants out, right, to certain counties in New Hampshire. COAT grant of Grafton County. And I bring this up publicly, just because it would be nice if we could have applied for some grants?
Well, you've got to read the eligibility in each case.
But you need to have funds to buy matching grants, right?
You do, but if you read the eligibility, we don't apply.
Oh, we don't even...
Well, please read it first. Yeah, we don't, it's job creation, job retention. We really are not in a position to apply for it.
Even apply for it.
But I think you should read it.
I will. I just got that today, so.
Yeah.
I just know I heard about it on the news, so...
It was on WMUR, and it was on...
The other thing I was asked today, I was called by Sherri Downey, about our cemeteries. Do we do anything for cemeteries, our town cemeteries around Memorial Day?
Yes.
We clean them up, cut the lines?
Yeah, the Public Works Department cleans them up, and Sherri has volunteered this year to put flags.
Okay.
Sherri should check with some of them, because some of them, they do not want flowers and plants on there, so she needs to make sure she checks with them.
Okay. Last but not least for me, skateboard ordinance. Did any of you see the skateboard ordinance that was done in 1977? With the word "only" inserted above. Just someday take a look at it. That's it for me, I'm all set. Anything else before we go into the financials?
He is going to, Gabe Meyer, Mr. Gabe Meyer is going to write to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to revisit the skateboard ordinance.
Okay, good. Maybe we will since that's been updated.
Is that the one from Laconia? Is that the one from Laconia?
No, no, this is a gentleman that was skateboarding down Main Street in a different fashion to the normal way of doing it.
And you know, in 1977?
And he was stopped by a police officer who asked him what he was doing, and he was sailing, you know, he was mainly sailing than skateboarding. And he wanted to know what the skateboard ordinance was for the town of Ashton, which we provided him with. And he said it's outdated, so...
So, do you know that people can skateboard down Highland Street? Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Whatever happened with that skating, that skating place in Laconia? Did they ever...
It caught fire, and they were out of business.
I know, but are they going to find a new place? Is there a possibility of Ashton?
In Laconia, no. No, no, they decided not to do it here.
Oh, that's right, they're going to Merida.
Are they going to Merida?
Yeah. I remember that now.
Okay, Steve. Everything else is done, we're just going to look at the financials?
Yep.
Okay.
Are these new ones that you have those?
I don't, we all have them. Yeah. They're 5, dated 5/13.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, it's an open discussion on this, but I just had a, I went through it, and I just wanted to touch on a few things to kind of get a sense of where we're at for the year-to-date, if there's any areas of concern. Before I get into any specific items, are there any specific lines that we should be concerned about that? There's little question that we'll be overspending those lines. Now, there's a couple in Public Works.
Yeah, well, the minor one that concerns me is the land use. The general expense line will be over-expended because...
There we go.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The general, oh, pardon.
Land use is already over.
Yeah.
I agree with Brenda that we should not put payment for Recording Secretary in payroll situation. It should come out of accounts payable, because then this individual is given a 1099, because she's not an employee of the town, she's an independent contractor. So, that line is, it's going to be really overspent.
And when we, and this is a question that I just don't know the answer to, when we overspend a specific line, what is the accounting process that shows where we got that, what line we got that money from? Because don't, aren't you...
We just keep on, we don't do anything with it. We just keep on over-spending.
It's the bottom-line budget.
Well, I know it's a bottom-line budget, but you don't, you don't have to account for it from, when you move things from one account to another?
No, no.
If you go over that line, it just shows that line as a minus. But as long as, you can move them, as long as you don't go over the bottom line.
Your point is, if we took...
My understanding is, is that there has to be an accounting trail that shows if you overspent line A, you got it from line B, that you were underspending. But I might be wrong on that, but it was my understanding.
Well, I just thought you look at all the overspending and the underspending, and they have to zero out at some point.
As long as you don't go over the bottom line.
I mean, it's a dynamic process.
But it does make mention in the RSA that a notation must occur when any changes occur. When any adjustments are made over and under, does say notation must be documented.
Brenda does.
Yeah.
As long as Brenda is making documentation.
She's making manual adjustments.
Correct, isn't that what you're talking about?
Yeah, my, I thought then if you overspent one line, you had to communicate where that was coming from, what line that was coming from. So, in other words, if you, if welfare was going to be underspent, then part of those dollars would come from welfare, but that could be wrong.
But the fact is, you, that may be the case this month, but next month, all of a sudden, we could get hit with big welfare expenses, and so you can't designate that money until you know at the end of the year.
That's right.
I mean, we're going to have to be very vigilant to make sure that we, everything zeros out at the end of the day.
There's no question about that, I just, I'll verify that.
Yeah.
Paul Moller, you're talking about the land use clerk. Does EBA, does they have any money to pay towards that land use clerk, or where does all that money come from?
No, we don't have, we don't have a land use clerk. This is just a Recording Secretary, not a clerk.
Well, you said land use when you said...
Well, but we're looking at planning and zoning as being all under the umbrella of land use.
Yeah, we deleted, when you see in the budget there, eventually, those lines will be deleted in time.
Okay, so what I'm asking, you can call him Secretary or whatever, is the Planning Board or the Zoning Board, is any of their budget paying for that?
No, because there's nothing in there.
It was, it was in our budget as a line item to pay for those expenses, and that line item is being overspent.
So, it's still coming from that line item, it's not coming from anyplace else?
Nope.
Now, we talked about in the future, making those, those boards be, for want of a better term, self-sufficient, that monies that they collect for fees, for application fees, be used to cover the expenses of land use clerk slash Administrative Assistant or whatever. But the way we're set up now, it's a line item in the general budget, and their revenues go into the general budget.
The RSA for the Board of Selectmen, which is 419, which is the increase of fees, doesn't apply to the Planning Board, because by RSA, they are allowed to raise the money and do what they want with it.
And in fact, they're having that discussion, both zoning and planning, on raising their fees, which would increase the revenues, and going forward, we need to make those separate entities, so that their, their revenues cover their own expenses, and it, you know, right now, it's all just part of the general budget.
What would be the appropriate accounting policy to do that? Do you know? Do we know how we would do that? If we wanted the Planning Board revenues to reflect...
We are, we are going to have to, the Board of Selectmen is going to have to sit down and work this out, and we will, we will make, make a proposal. In fact, the land use boards will make a proposal to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Okay.
But I thought all that money has to go into the general fund?
No, it doesn't.
Not at all.
That's where it's going.
By RSA, it doesn't.
Yeah, and that's where it's been going for 20 years.
That's right.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't, yes.
Anything else, Steve?
Any other known expenses that you can think of that are going to be coming up, that we should be aware of, that are going to throw any of these lines off by any significant...
No, Public Works, as you said, we could be, I know Tim's very conscious of looking at that, that's going to be well, well over there.
Thank God winter's done.
Yeah, well over, well over the top.
What about cash flow? I was looking at the cash flow. Do we have concerns that we have limited funds in cash to cover our expenses prior to the next taxes coming in?
I'll know more about that next week, but Brenda and I looked at, when she did the cash flow analysis for you, we, we thought we'd get money back on the tax lanes in a, in a pretty orderly fashion, but that isn't going to happen. The tax bills now, thanks to the warrant, will go out.
Okay.
And we hope to see some money, you know, pretty soon, I would think.
Okay. It just looked a little bit slim to me when I looked at the cash flow analysis.
And that's not uncommon.
It's not.
Well, I know we had discussed whether or not we need a tan, and Brenda said, I certainly hope not, I just, just checking to see what the feeling is.
Well, you know, we are in an awkward position, because we've got no, no interest.
As long as we don't get into a position where it's, we don't have any money next week, or...
Right.
Mrs. Cole pointed out something today, that the school payment has increased by $1,000, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Which one?
The Ashton School.
So, instead of, it's going to be $200,000 now?
It'll be $199.
Yeah, $199, yeah.
Okay, it was $198.
Yeah.
So, now it'll be 99.5, twice a month.
Can we just make sure that the estimates that Brenda has done for the disbursements by month are as accurate and up-to-date as they can be, so that we'll have a better, and they may be already, I just want to make sure that they, they are.
You know, it's usually at the first of the month, like the June 2nd meeting, when we'll have the Treasurer reading out, and we'll have a better handle on where our cash flow is.
Okay.
How about legal line?
Well, we're, if you lump in, well, thank goodness that, we've probably got one more bill to come in from, from the Franchise Attorney for the cable TV. We were looking at the FairPoint case that we're working on, and that will probably not happen until 2015, so we might be, we might be okay. There were a couple of open cases that are still sitting there, but nothing, no movement on them, so...
We don't have any big ones, so...
No, we don't, no. Yeah. Yep.
And it looks like there's some fuel lines that are, that are pretty close.
Yeah. Yeah. Park and Rec worried me a little bit, but we'll know more, well, after the Board has made a decision, I would think on...
How about fire training? I noticed that the budget is $5,000, and we, looks like we spent $77.40.
There was a reading, yeah. Yeah, I'll have to get some information on that, Steve, there was a, Brenda...
That is page six.
I can't say without asking her.
And then the defibrillator lease purchase, is that all paid for now, or is that all, so that's done?
Yeah, that's all, that's all finished.
Yeah.
Yep.
And highway overtime, looks like we have 25% left.
Yep.
Which is pretty close. And most of the rest are all related to fuel expense, for the most part. Transfer, recycling, equipment maintenance, $2,500, and we spent $4,000, so we...
Yeah, that was repair, a lot of it, because we didn't get the new equipment, and yeah, we didn't get the equipment.
Right, right.
We've had to repair the two skid steer and also the compact.
They're going to be lucky if they live.
Yeah.
Then the only other question is, on the last page, where it's interest on long-term bonds, what do we, do we do two payments on those? Is that how we do that? Because I'm looking at what percentage we have left, and it's about basically 50% left, so is there just two payments on that? We've made one, and there's one more left to be made?
Yeah, yeah. On which particular one are you looking?
If you look at the, on your, the right side there, you see the ones that have 50% left?
Oh, these are the water bonds, yes, yeah.
So, I don't, when do we make those payments? What's the frequency of payment?
These are, there'll be one more this year.
Do we know one?
I'm going to check on that.
Yeah.
I'll check on the water bond. I'll check.
Thank you.
There's one more, Steve. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Yeah, nothing else to check on. Okay. Do you have any known from the financials?
I'm all set with the financials, I've reviewed them, and I know, I'm looking where we're sitting. And just FYI, just to give you a summary sheet, I just played with the numbers on a sheet. You can have a summary page that actually lists all the departments. So, and you know, I know you're going to go through the detail, but what you'll see here...
The week that I have one?
Oh, I didn't give you that, I'm sorry. I have plenty. So, what I did here is, you see what we spent in 2013, and I say Brenda's proposal, but what that is, is the new appropriation lineup, okay? And then you'll see the expenses year-to-date, okay? You'll see the default budget as it was originally aligned, okay? And then you see the January to March 31st expenses, in column, whatever that is. And that's as of March 31st. And then you see the April expenses as of April 30th, in the next column, okay? You go over to the year-to-date, and you can see the year-to-date expenses, so if you compare year-to-date in that column, you'll see that it's only off by $2 in the Brenda expenses year-to-date. And that's a matter of the rounding up, right?
Yeah, okay.
And then you see what our revenue is remaining, and that just shows you the percentages. Ignore the first two column of percentages, because that's really the default lineup.
Yeah.
But if you go over to the Brenda portion, balance remaining, the percentages remaining. And then I took it one step further, and if you look at the very last column, it's deviation from average, 100% being average.
Yeah.
So, if it's below 100, those lines are underspending.
You're underspending from the average.
As you move further over your budget, the number's the highest.
Ooh.
So, if you could look at some of these, like reevaluation of property...
Uh-huh, there's a lot.
No, legal, let's just, you just talked legal, 174%.
Right.
So, that is just a number that just shows how much greater we are over where we should be, based on the fact that we've been through the first four months of the year.
Right.
So, just a little sheet I was playing with.
No, no, this is very good.
Very nice work.
I like this now.
So, you can get your microscope on and just look at that summary pages.
A magnifying glass, ooh.
Yeah, that's good stuff.
Yeah, this is lovely.
You just made me think of one last question. I know Brenda was going to be preparing something, Paul, that would communicate which lines she moved items for, so as either the Select Board or the Budget Committee looks at the budget, they can have like a legend that will tell, tell us that she moved this from executive to financial.
Right, right.
And I know she was trying to complete that, that would be something that I'm...
She, I thought she was hoping to do that for the Budget Committee meeting on 5:30 on Wednesday, or...
Yes, that'd be great.
Is she going to be at that meeting?
Yeah, she is, yeah.
Good, oh, that's good.
Okay, any other Select Board business? Any other business? Can we ask for a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Leading adjourned, aye?
It's set at 9:53.
9:53, thank you.
Wednesday morning, 8:00.
8:00 down the road.
Health Officer, most of the cases I deal with are, are not for public knowledge, and so I can't provide you, I keep a spreadsheet of those cases. But when the Board had asked for monthly reports, I would come here and tell you basically how many cases I handled.
And that's what it is.
And then that all went away. You ended up, you ended up canceling your, your status reports, and if you want to re-implement that, I'd be happy to do that.
When I called this state lady, Beverly, who is now along, not doing that anymore, she, she agreed with you, she said, it's very difficult. She said so much of it under HIPAA, you just cannot...
Absolutely, I would not reveal.
You cannot reveal.
Names and addresses, I would tell you.
That's what the other health officer used to do, you know, she'd say like, I had five calls this week, or whatever.
And that I can do, you know, because I do keep that.
Then we reinstated it.
We met with Jim last year, he, he had an Excel spreadsheet going with him.
He did, but what I'm saying is, we need to, the Town Administrator needs to make sure that we have it like every three months, an update of it, so, because, look what happened with the plumbing inspector, this is what happened, because we don't have the updates.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree, so can we do that?
Yes, you can, yes.
You know, I'd just like to state that, for the record, that I don't report to the Select Board, I report to the State as a health officer, and I noted in your flow sheet, it had me reporting up through the Select Board. I would be more than happy to provide that information about the number of cases, but, you know, I don't...
The reason is...
Go ahead, Phil.
These reports are going to be in writing, and they are going to be delivered to whom?
Town Administrator.
Town Administrator.
Yeah, I used to do it at Paul. I have a template.
And they will be read out?
Yep.
Well, that's what I'm hoping doesn't happen. I mean, that's why we moved away from reports, it's, it just took our time, it just wasted time at the meeting. And if, maybe you can incorporate the...
Well, in mine, that's what I'm sorry.
Say that...
It will be incorporated in the Town Administration.
That's fine, that's good.
And what reports specifically are we talking about?
Well, building inspector and plumbing inspector.
In the building world, include the electrical inspector.
The electrical inspector.
I mean, we had, we had comments that, that department heads were spending a lot of time preparing reports, that were really, didn't say anything. I mean, didn't contribute anything.
I think, again, what we saw with Jim's Excel spreadsheet, that just provided us with the information, the, you know, where it was at, that was helpful. If that was continued...
The reason with the department heads, because they were doing them once a month, and coming to the meetings, and so they said it was sort of tough.
This would be a requirement.
But the thing is, somehow, we need to keep track of what's going on and make sure that it's done.
If Paul gets the reports, and Paul, his report, his monthly report, states that he has received reports from such and such...
And it will be very much what like Fran will give cases, building inspector will say 12, sign permits, this permit...
And then the follow-up to that would be, I would
And it will be very much what like Fran will give cases. Building inspector will say 12, sign permits, this permit.
And then the follow-up to that would be, I would hope, that if we as any individual Select Board members want to see where we're at.
Yep.
For example, X number of people came in for building inspections, they're logged on here, this is when they were visited, this is when they were approved. So that we go to one place and see all that.
Yes, centralized, correct.
So you'll, that's what.
And so that the selectmen, we don't need to bring them to the meetings, but the selectmen can look at them.
Right.
And who knows? We might, we might spot a problem and say, "Look, there's a problem here with this one."
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, we can move on.
No, I have, when I.
Next item.
This is with mine, yeah.
Yep.
When I mentioned the monthly reports, I don't know if you remember, I, I don't know if you remember, but I also mentioned the evaluations for the department heads, if they're being done and when the last one was done, and how often they're done, so.
We're starting in August. We're going to do the performance evaluations for all of the departments, the department heads, and the town administrator, whether or not increases for 2015 are going to be given out. But certainly the performance will start in August.
And how often are you going to be doing these?
We're going to do it once a year.
Yep.
So it'll be done in August of every year?
Yep. Fall of every year, just before, just before budget season. So if it's appropriate, that the Board feels that.
Okay.
And is there, is there, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, I don't think that it's been followed through on in the past.
No, it hasn't, no.
So I think we have to make sure, Paul, that every August this is done.
Yep.
And that everything is in writing. Every evaluation that you do is in the file.
So what we should do is, every evaluation needs to be completed by September.
Mm-hmm.
Because he may not get them all done in August due to vacations.
Right.
But let's, let's state with what.
How many do you have? 20?
The department heads are going to do their.
You don't have that many.
And then I'll do theirs.
So you start and have it completed in August?
Yeah. We don't have that many.
Okay, good.
Do we have a template?
Yeah, I got, yeah. I sent the three-person board, Jeanette may remember this, the performance evaluations sheets that we did.
Yeah.
And it said to, I'll.
Is it one template that would apply to all different positions?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, see, that was before, I think that was before me though, because it wasn't done last August.
No, it was not, no.
Okay. That's fine then.
Yep.
Anything else, Jeanette?
Nope, that's it right now.
Steve, you had another thing?
Uh, yeah. We've got, I assume we're going over financials tonight because that was one of the things we had talked about, right?
Can we do that towards the end?
Yes, I just wanted to verify that that was going to be happening. Okay?
Can, Jamie, can I ask Tim to come in and talk about Levitt Hill? Tim Pickett? He's here.
Okay, was Levitt Hill, uh?
No, I'm going to bring a couple of things up on the Select Board items.
Tim?
Yeah, thank you.
Come on in, have a seat.
I mentioned this to you a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, yes.
You're all aware of the Levitt Hill project going on over there? And they started above the beach bathhouse. That section from a stop sign to where they started is in the greatest shape. They are planning to pave, repave that as part of their project.
They, meaning?
Berrygon is investors.
Okay.
At no cost to attend.
Good.
Problem is, there's catch basin that's failed. Over there, that needs to be replaced, along with many others that I'm working on right now. So that drainage is over 20 years old. I think Mike did that, Michael took it back in 89 or 90. 24 years old, 25 years old.
Okay.
So I spoke to him the other day, and we took a quick look at it. What I'd like to do is kind of piggyback off their project and have Mike repair the drainage while he's there, before they actually pave it.
Where's the catch basin?
There's four catch basins that are there.
And you're talking about all of them?
They should all be looked at, if not all be replaced. There's plastic pipe there, so we will not have to replace the pipe, which is a good thing. That's, that's going to be a big cost savings. But it is, it's over 400 feet of drainage.
And this is the section that is now paved?
No, it's going to be repaved.
It's, it's the, yeah, it hasn't been paved yet.
Right.
Okay.
So it needs to be done. The water sewer line that they tapped into is above the bathroom, so they didn't touch that lower section by the beach.
Right.
But they are going to pave that as part of their project when they're done.
Okay.
So this needs to be done before they do the pave?
I would like to have, with Mike, with his equipment there, you know, get an estimate from him while he's there to do this, and get it taken care of. I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer.
We should definitely get an estimate, yeah.
You know, to have.
Well, it doesn't make sense to dig it up.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, you know? And he's, they've got about a June 1 deadline that they're going to do a base coat over there.
Okay.
So we're kind of.
June 1st, like in a week or two?
Yeah. It might be another week after that, but he's, he's been up there working right now.
They had a deadline of last fall.
Well, yeah. So.
Doesn't mean much.
But that's why I wanted to come here tonight and just, and talk to you. Like I said, I spoke to Norm, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and we.
Did you say anything, did you mention the cost at all?
I, I didn't, I have, I don't know what the cost is yet.
Don't have any idea, ballpark?
Um, Mike was going to get back to me with some numbers. Again, not having to replace the pipe is going to be a huge, huge savings.
When you say the pipe, you mean the culvert itself?
The culvert pipe. It's all underground drainage. It's a drainage.
Well, could we have a special meeting if Tim can get the cost? I mean, it's kind of hard to make a decision without an access.
Well, I don't think we're going to make a decision with this. We don't have enough.
We don't have enough information.
No, no, I'm just, I wanted, I wanted to bring it down.
But time is of the essence, so maybe we can call a special meeting when you get the details.
Because you're not, you're, by correct, that you're going to need a decision on this before our next meeting?
That's what it sounded like to me.
Our next meeting is the first.
Yeah, I'd like to get the go-ahead with this. Once I, once I get, once I have numbers to give to you guys.
Yeah, get the numbers.
You know, I mean, if it's, it's, if it's under the $10,000, then we don't have to put it out to bid. And I'm pretty sure it's, even if, well, even if I have to buy the material out of my budget line and then just have him do the work, you know? So I think that's.
I would suggest you go ahead and get the numbers as soon as you can and let us know.
And he may find when he starts digging, he may not have to replace all the catch basins.
That would be nice.
You know, so.
So you're not replacing culvert, you're replacing primarily catch basin?
Catch basins, because it's plastic pipe and it's still good pipe.
Okay.
Got you. Yeah, so if you can move forward on that.
Yep, definitely.
Great.
You can react.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, well, I just want to bring up, just what I'm going to do.
Brilliant.
Okay. We, we have had two individuals express an interest in the CIP committee, one of which sent us a note last week. Kendall Hughes, Kendall B. Hughes has requested, has actually asked to be on the CIP committee. So what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to appoint Kendall B. Hughes to the CIP committee.
And the motion that we appoint.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say, well, you say it, saying that, we also have, Ingrid is also interested too.
Well, I can only do one appointment.
I know, I just, I didn't want you to leave that out.
So I have a motion. Is that correct?
Yes, you have a motion.
And a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Kendall to the CIP committee, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Did you say aye?
I did say aye.
I didn't hear him. I didn't see him.
Okay, secondly, we also received today a note in the office, and I think you guys got the email from Ingrid, Idenrake, who has expressed an interest in being on the CIP So I guess I'll ask for a motion to, to appoint Ingrid, and we can have discussion. Or, do you want to discuss it?
I, I guess, I would be interested in having her on the CIP. My only concern is that would have two people from the fire department on the CIP where we're doing a lot of projects that are involved that. So I'd be concerned about how that, if there's any conflict, there are any concerns that we should be aware of before doing that.
Is that something maybe you should take back to the CIP and get their thoughts on it? Because, rather than, than us? I don't know. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but.
Again, I guess I would only think to that, the person that you deal with in the CIP, with the fire department, is Steve. And he comes up with the information.
No, that isn't what he's talking about. What, I think what he's saying is, when if they both get called out at the same time.
Oh, is that the concern?
Well, that's part of it. Then the other part of it is just.
Making a vote.
When we make a vote on what we want to approve to give to the selectmen as an advisory, having multiple people from the same department.
They would have to recuse themselves.
Both things, as.
You know, maybe I'm overthinking it.
Yeah, I don't know.
So that's, just, I guess, out there for discussion of, does anyone have that concern?
Yeah, I have that concern. I mean, the concern is, if they both get called out at the same time because they're on the fire department, and he, and the chairman doesn't have a majority there, he has to call them in.
I think that's a legitimate concern.
So I guess a legitimate enough concern, since we only received this today, we can.
I think we should think about it.
Think about this, see now, in the next two weeks.
But I'd try to get the feedback at the CIP committee as well and get their thoughts.
I will do that. We'll, we're meeting this Wednesday, so.
And I, maybe you even have discussion with the individuals.
Yes, I, I will do that.
As the chairman of the CIP to.
I intend to do that, yes.
So that's what we'll do.
Okay.
We'll save this one. Okay, I just, a couple of other things I wanted to bring up real quick. I have to bring this up because I think we've all been called about it. I just wanted to bring it up into our public forum. I've received several phone calls over the last week and a half regarding the logger, logging operation on Sanborn Road that's actually going on off Rogan Road.
And I think we all got an email on it.
We did, from Jay.
We did, we got pictures and everything.
So again, I just think we should need to bring this up publicly. We, we know what our responsibility is from a town's perspective, and I'll just ask you to reiterate our involvement in that.
If there's damage to the road caused by these loggers, then yes, we have to, we have to intervene. At the moment, the Board of Selectmen have given their commission with the intent to cut. The loggers have reinforced the residence culvert there. The driveway is getting a little bit of an attack, but it is the right of way given by the easement. And the gentleman across the street in 63 Sanborn is concerned that vehicles are backing into his, his driveway. And we've made a suggestion that if any of those connections are a civil matter, that they should get an attorney and have an injunction against the people on the street loggers.
Well, he has a further concern, and he called me as the health officer, that, that the trucks are leaking diesel fuel, and he is concerned about it leaching into his well. He did call DES, DES, I've asked him to please summarize all of the details because I don't want to incorrectly report what he was saying to me. So I want it in writing because I'm a big fan of documentation. He's concerned, and he actually sent some pictures. And I think, I spoke with Tim Pickett earlier because he went up there to look at the road specifically, and there was a trace of diesel fuel. So from a health perspective, that is an issue that we need to pursue. If there is in fact diesel fuel, how much is it? And is it, is it a concern for his drinking water?
Tim, can I ask you your exit piece for a sec?
It's more than a trace.
Are DES coming out?
Well, DES would not come out today. That he was, they were supposed to come out today, but they refused. And, and again, I told him to please put this in writing because I want to make sure I'm reporting the facts correctly. So I'm reluctant to say why DES will not come out until he gets permission to go on the land or something. I, I don't know what, exactly what he needs. I want it in writing. But it, it bears, you know, a concern if there's, if there's any way that this is getting into the drinking water. I know nothing about diesel. I don't know how quickly it evaporates, how far it penetrates, how much is actually being leaked. He threw out a number, but I have no way of knowing where that number came from.
Do you have any information on that? As far as what? The diesel leaks that I've seen on Salmon Road?
Yeah.
And then as you get, get off Salmon Road onto Winona?
It, it's right when you come out of the driveway is a little, you know, it's probably 20 feet, you can see it at the swath there. And then when you get to the end of Salmon Road into Winona Road, that's when you see it again.
Yeah.
Did you take a look at it?
I have not. I spoke with Tim earlier.
Fran and I spoke earlier today, and, you know, it's, is it happening every day? I don't know. You know, like, I told Fran, you know, from my years on the department, sometimes it looks worse than what it actually is. It doesn't take much to, to make a spill look bigger than, you know? I mean, that could have been two gallons of diesel for all we know.
That's it? I have no way of knowing.
Diesel stains anything.
Yeah.
Or hydraulic fluid.
Yeah.
I did take a picture because I took some pictures of the road in case anything does happen on our part as far as it breaking up.
Right.
So I have some before and after pictures. I did take a picture of that one spot.
Yeah.
I know one of the property owners up there did some pictures of her cell.
Yeah, he sent a bunch of pictures and an email today as well.
It looked to me as though Salmon Road is getting broken up.
It wasn't, it was fairly well cracked before they even started.
There's places where it looks like there's pieces of macadam.
I, I took pictures probably four, five days after they started their operation. So I do have some of them to go by.
I would just like to mention one other thing that he revealed to me, and we need to find out if this is true, and that the right to cut document was only signed by two Select Board members.
There you go. Just so that information, which was not correct, you can see at the bottom, was signed by Jeanette, myself, and Steve.
Okay. He said there were, the one he, yep, I do see that. He said the one he had only had two signatures.
That's the one he has a copy of.
Okay, fine. As long as, then it's legitimate if it's got three signatures.
So that's why I figured I'd bring it so you could see that the.
Good, all right, that's fine.
The three of us were here at the last meeting and signed up on it.
That's fine. Okay, so that, that issue is, is not an issue.
That's correct.
But, you know, we do need to, I, I wish that he, I will ask him again to please summarize this, because if, if there is an issue with his drinking water, then DES needs to get there, and we need to figure out what hurdles need to be overcome for them to get out there and look at the, because I am not an expert on diesel, and I don't think anyone here is. So it would be up to DES to decide if this is a concern for his drinking water.
Okay, so.
And I know the conservation.
He's spoken to them as well, yeah.
Renee and Stacy both took a look up there, so I certainly think there are.
He's covered a number of bases.
The governing bodies, the committees and boards have been apprised.
Okay.
And I know, again, Tim is fully aware, so from a town perspective, I think we've done what we can do.
Right.
And the neighbor also complained about the noise. Paul checked into that and took care of that complaint.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I'm sure we'll hear more about that, but I just wanted to bring it up. Okay, next, I want to just bring up, I need the Board's okay, at the last July, 4th of July committee meeting, I received all the volunteer forms for the individuals, and I just need the Board's okay for me to sign the forms.
Okay, now I have a question.
Sure.
If, if an individual helps out, okay?
Yeah.
And it's not on there, then they are not covered. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Say that again. If an individual.
Volunteers.
And doesn't sign.
And isn't one of those.
That's correct.
People that signed it, they're not covered.
That is correct. They have to sign these.
I wanted to make sure.
And they know that, they announced that at the meeting.
Okay. Then that, I think you should sign them.
So, just so you know.
Okay.
And everybody involved in that committee to date has signed it except for one individual. I have a blank to provide him with.
Okay.
But yes, we're all in agreement with that.
Good.
Okay? So I got an okay to take care of that?
And you wouldn't let me have it so I can send it to Primex for the master city.
You have it as soon as I sign them. Okay?
Yep.
I got a second, just follow up question on that. On the 4th of July thing, do select board members participate in that whole 4th of July parade?
Sure, you can do anything you want to help out with the 4th of July. They'll be very happy to get your help. But we don't do anything. We don't do anything official if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
So we don't ride on open land out or?
Well, I don't, we don't participate in the parade or any of that kind of stuff. Okay.
Go ahead and do something while in the parade.
Just ask me to.
You can if you'd like.
Okay.
I'm sure they would welcome you if you. The second thing is, go ahead.
Go ahead. When you finish, I have a few things.
I definitely will. I need to request a motion for us to sign the warrant to direct Patty Tuck, the tax collector, to collect the property taxes for the upcoming billing season, so.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second it. Any further discussion?
Is that the?
It'd be cheaper not to sign it.
That's in regards to 2013?
That's regards to 2014.
To collect the property taxes.
Yes, yes.
You've been talking about reducing the tax burden.
No, no, just to collect the taxes that are due.
To increase revenue. Okay?
Yep.
So we have a motion seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, somebody else can bring something up while I'm signing this.
I just wanted to bring up, we had a situation with something on Facebook and we had a complaint from a resident and there were, Paul had given us the information and those comments, but it was not signed. And at Selatman's meeting before this, we said, any comment, any complaints that are made by residents have to be signed. We had mentioned that when Anne Samborn had hers because she didn't sign it. And I just want to make sure, you know, if we have any complaints, like the one from Ingrid, it needs to be signed. We can't just accept a resident's complaint and not have it signed. It has to be signed when they come in and fill out the form.
Haven't we done this?
Yeah, I thought we've already, I thought we've already made that decision.
We did before, but it wasn't signed again.
I know nothing about another, what are we talking about? This is old news since the last, prior to the last meeting. Two copies of this, correct?
I don't know. What's the date on that?
This is April 25th, I guess. This is, I think, this is in relation to the.
That decision was agreed upon post that incident, so I totally agree with you.
Yeah, well, it wasn't signed. I don't know who she gave it to. Or who, where it came from.
Gave it to, not me. I didn't, I wasn't around. It was a weekend, so.
She must have given it to Norman when that incident happened and.
We've already made that decision.
I did. Again, we already made that decision. Well, in the future, they need to be.
And this was the future and it was not signed.
Disagree. Disagree?
Yeah, I think I, I think I recall having seen, I guess, an email or something.
Right. In April. But when did we make the decision about them being signed?
Well, we've done it. I'm quite certain we've done it.
We've made that decision. That incident occurred prior to.
No, I think it occurred after.
Well, I'm just telling you, that did not, I'm 100% positive that that incident occurred prior to us discussing that those things need to be signed.
The reason I'm saying that that incident occurred after was because Anne Samborn's incident happened before and we said that it wasn't signed and they need to be signed.
No.
I think we, I think we understand that it should be signed.
And it wasn't.
See, we're all in agreement about they need to be signed, but we don't need to break apart what we have a disagreement about.
It wasn't signed. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, we know. We know that.
It wasn't signed because it wasn't a complaint that was brought to the town office, first of all.
Well, how come it was given to the Selatman then? Why wasn't the complaint brought to the town office? It should have been.
The incident occurred at the police station, so it was not a concerned citizen form filled out until well after the incident.
But should it have occurred at the police station? That's what I'm saying. Why?
Because that person requested that they go to the police station. And that's why I don't understand why we're still debating. The discussion we had post that, I'm in full agreement on how we should handle it in the future.
Yeah, so the bottom line is.
What are we accomplishing by discussing?
We're accomplishing nothing.
Well, let's move on.
We're accomplishing the fact that they have to.
See, you continue to do that. It's not necessary. It's over. Let's move forward.
We've made that decision.
Next, anything else? If not, I got a couple of things.
I do too.
First, I just do this final signature file thing if we could.
Yeah.
This is for the bond payment invoice to the New Hampshire Muniscible Bond Bank regarding one of the water and sewer bonds for $40,000, $44,000.
Fifteen years ago.
Do we need to motion this? Or we just need to initial? Right?
Okay.
It would have been on the signature file.
Yeah, okay.
Do it tonight. Get it out.
Right.
Did that guy McDonald ever pay for that?
No, not yet.
He was sent, he was sent a certified letter.
He was, that's correct.
Okay, one of the small items shouldn't take more than a minute or two or three. Today I was approached by an, I was approached recently by an individual who want Friday, who wanted a key to the office, secretary of the planning board. I don't know what the policy is or the protocol is. So the point I said is, go see Paul.
Yeah.
Paul controls the keys. So I just wanted to bring this forward away that I was asked. The person went to Paul. Paul, and by the way, it was Gordon, Gordon McCorr Jr. And Paul let him know that the keys are only given out to office staff, Board of Select and.
Treasurer.
Treasurer and department heads.
Right.
And I don't think we want to change that.
I don't think. Fewer keys than that.
Right. There is a key, at least a key out there with another board or committee that, again, if we're going to follow that protocol, we should do something about it.
I say fewer keys.
Yes.
Problem that I have, what Paul said to me was that Gordon said that you gave him permission to have the key.
I told Gordon to go see Paul and Gordon asked me and how I felt about it. I'm okay with it, but you need to go see him is what I said.
And the office is open all day long.
Yeah.
Anybody who needs to get in there can get in there.
Does it, I assume there's agreement with all of us that it stays.
So we all agree that that's how it should be?
I definitely agree.
Yeah.
Okay, Jeanette, you said you had a couple of other things?
Let's see what I have here. That was one of them, so that's off the thing. The other thing is, we're going to be meeting with John Gordon. Chief Heath is going to be there too Wednesday at 8:00.
Is that at the town hall?
That's at, we changed that. I, we did it late in the afternoon.
Were you meeting at?
The Ashland Properties location.
I have no idea where that is.
It's right, LW Packet.
Which entrance?
I don't know either. You just go down and John will be there. You'll see all the standards.
Which side of the river?
I don't know because I haven't been down there.
Well, shouldn't we be a little more specific?
Why? Ashland Properties location. I mean, I mean, it's not five acres.
When you go down the old one.
We turned down.
Can you describe how to get there?
It's not five acres.
When you go down Mill Street and you've got, the lane's properly on the right, continue on, it'll be there. It's a white.
The white building.
So it's the same one that his.
That's where he'll be. He'll be down.
You can't miss it. There's somebody going to be standing there. John will be there.
So if I, am I taking Winter Street or am I taking?
Mill Street.
North Street.
I'm taking Mill Street off of.
Yeah, off of, back on the fire station, yeah. Go straight down.
Until you see some people lying down on the road.
You'll see.
Should we be?
And as at 8:00 AM, he'll be there.
Should we have gloves and hard hats and tell him to call him tomorrow?
I would not.
I think you should have just a paper mask, yeah.
Okay.
I'll bring masks in case you can bring them.
Okay.
And who's going to?
Need knee-high boots.
Yeah, closed-toed shoes.
Who's going to be there?
John Gordon and Steve Heath.
Yeah, and us.
And a lot of his best.
Are you going to be there?
I just want to say Paul's not, I had told Paul that the Selatman would like him there, but he has a Primex convention, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Paul, what's that Primex convention about? What is it all about?
It's an annual, annual conference that they.
Steve Heath's.
There was someone there from Franklin.
I think Elizabeth, yeah.
So I would say that this process of town cooperation has not gotten underway, but this is the first step and this is your introduction to it.
So what we're being asked tonight is, would we be interested?
You're being made aware of this.
I think, I think.
Oh, just to be.
Information, Walter Cento, his attendance at the meeting.
Yeah.
And look at Pat's, look at what Pat gives you in the minutes. And that'll give you the websites and how to get to it.
Paul, you had something?
If you have trouble, I have downloaded the three of them and if you have trouble doing it, I can cut you a CD. You can listen to it on the way to Manchester.
Two years ago, Ashland was in pretty much monthly contact with representatives from Northern Pass. They came here and made a presentation. Newsletters went out. All of a sudden, when the permitting process, the first time around, didn't go through, they cut out talking to the local government officials and sent direct letters and newsletters to the landowners that would be affected, particularly here in Ashland. And of course, it was going to come along White Mountain Golf Course and down. And they did a walk around about a year ago and looked at it right away and then it, well, it all went quiet. And this has now materialized again because the people that bought all the land up in the northern woods has prevented them from doing what they initially wanted to do. So this is really the second go-around for the big permitting process. What Walter Johnson's idea is, if it comes to fruition, perhaps we could do a consortium of the Lakes Region towns where you're right, you're going to have to put up some money. Now, when we initially talked about this, from a tax standpoint, a revenue standpoint, Ashland was going to get a quarter of a million dollars one time. Franklin, which is the end of the term, the first end of the terminal, gets $5 million and certainly a number of new jobs to build the substation. And that was $5 million to the town and $2 million to the school. So there was, it was worthwhile. It was worthwhile to get it involved.
And that doesn't include the increased property value from building that facility there that's going to create. So Franklin makes up.
That's right. Whereas we already lost some people who had homes in the units there on the golf course, decided to go to Florida and sold it for a song because they didn't want to listen to the noise of these high towers and things like that.
I think it's something we need to monitor very carefully and be ready to, you know, make a decision if we need to, whether it be a coalition. You know, you're right, it'll be money someday, but.
In the email I left you, the town of Thornton, Board of Directors already made a decision. They do not want to get involved. However, they will direct residents of the town, whether it be to the websites of the people in Northern Pass or Quebec, or else they'll put them in contact with other people.
Okay.
But I do think this, this requires some fortifying.
Absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Well, thank you for going to that meeting.
It's not a question of being handed a time-worn contract and passing it around the table.
Clearly not.
It's a lot more involved.
Yeah.
Lot more complex, yes.
And the implications and the fallout, if that's the proper word, is very substantial. It's going to have a huge impact on the northern part of the state. And we can't just assume that, let George do it, you know, we've got to, we've got to be the ones to.
And the sad thing, money talks.
Money talks loud and clear. It sure does.
So what we'll do is, again, we'll just continue to stay, try to stay on top of this, bring it up. Any information, I'm sure you will forward to us. Okay, next thing on the new business was unanticipated money. One of the things we need to do this evening is we need to acknowledge receipt of a recent police grant in the amount of $1,269. So I need a motion for reception of that police grant of $1,269.
I'm not sure what the motion is, that we, that we accept this money?
Yes.
Okay, I don't make a motion. We accept the grant.
$1,269.
$1,269.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The other question was, go ahead, Jeanette.
While we're on the grant thing, I just wanted to mention about that grant writing workshop that's going to be June 4th. Jeannie Forrester had sent the information.
Yeah, I'm going to go to that.
I'd like, I'd like to go to that too.
Isn't it in Conca? Does it, is it Conca?
It is, it wasn't Conca.
I don't believe it's Conca yet.
I would, yeah, I would definitely like to go to that.
Just Fran, by RSA, any funds that are unanticipated under $5,000 and under, we don't have to hold a public hearing.
Right.
But we do have to accept it and that's what we've not done in the past.
Thank you.
For instance, they hit the community grant, garden grant from Meredith Village. At that evening, we acknowledged it, but we didn't then at the next board meeting, accept it so it could go in the minutes and be reflected in the minutes.
So we also have to, because we did, when it was the three-member board, we acknowledged the receipt of the $3,500, but we didn't motion to accept it.
It wasn't in the minutes, no, we didn't.
It should have been because we did it.
I thought we did.
We did.
Do you recollect? Anyway, it was not discovered a minute, so we have to redo that. We have to do the $3,500.
What does it say in the minutes?
It says, he stated that it was, just wasn't there.
It's got to be there. We voted on it.
Well, it doesn't hurt to vote on it again.
No, but I'm just saying we voted on it because you were the one that got the grant.
We're already spending the money.
I know.
There is a recent one for $85?
That was three checks from the community for the.
I see two, $3,500.
The race beds.
Oh, those are people leasing plots.
Okay, the $3,500 was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was from Meredith Village savings.
Just to again, to make, ensure that they're in the minutes, can I ask for a motion for receiving and accepting the $3,500 grant for the yield?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted, I miss I want to discuss it. At the time, it was a three-member board.
Right.
So I'm wondering if, because at the time it was supposed to be voted on, was a three-member board, if the three members of the board shouldn't do it. I don't know. I'm just saying.
The motion reaffirmed.
I'll abstain. I mean, if you want, I don't care.
I'm not sure that that would be.
I don't.
I don't know. I'm just saying because that happened.
That's all we're doing is, I believe we also discussed it and I thought we accepted it.
I thought we voted on it.
But I don't think it causes any harm to reconfirm.
I'm just asking.
So it was moved by.
Me.
Seconded by Steve. Any further discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Taken care of. Maybe twice.
Yeah, I was going to go back and look because I, I thought we voted on that. Because I remember Fran wanted us to get it done.
Okay, next thing on the new business is options available to reduce the burden on taxpayers.
Wait a minute, are we supposed to vote on that $80, something dollars you brought up?
I thought that wasn't a grant.
No, that's not a grant.
Separate checks from individuals.
Oh, dear.
Vote to accept that $85?
Brenda says not.
Oh, I wouldn't think so.
Not, not for that one. No.
Doesn't say vote, it says or. If we need to do it, you can ask her and we'll be glad to.
There will be more coming in, just FYI.
Yeah, that's right. There will be more coming in, yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Paul, can you check on that?
Yeah.
On the $85 or, what do you want to do it, just to confirm it?
No, just have him check on it, Paul. Because there's going to be more coming in, so if we have to vote on it, we'll vote on it later.
Amounts of money, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so again, put this on the agenda so that we could just have a roundtable discussion on thoughts about ways that we might be able to reduce the tax burden. And a few of the things that were listed are outsourcing, talking about employee contributions, shared services with other communities, health insurance, alternate plans, and informing some retirees that they should contribute to health insurance. These are just a couple of the things that were brought up. And I can tell you, at the CIP meeting last week, I heard about something that, again, great idea, thought. Again, it has to be analyzed. We have to talk about these things, analyze the impact financially, analyze the impact from a person perspective, employee perspectives. But Steve brought, Heath brought up in his presentation a thought about the ambulance and the possibility of collaborative effort to get the ambulance going as a primary vehicle for first responders. Manning the station, again, with EMTs, maybe trying to collaborate that with Holderness, who doesn't even have any ambulance and just like us, is paying Plymouth $47,000 a year to have outside ambulance service.
We've been talking about that with Steve for the past two or three years too. I think we had a meeting when you've been on.
We did, no, in August we had a meeting. But what we didn't discuss back then was collaboration with another community.
And it's.
Because they work.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to say with mutual aid, they work with other communities, so it isn't as though they don't, you know. So I imagine that they could, you know, do something with that. The thing is, before, four or five years ago, the ambulance wasn't up to speed either. So now it is. Now we have everything in the ambulance.
Well, I heard, I heard the chief say specifically, I would have no problem.
That's right. And we didn't before, but now we do.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's a great discussion and I think we ought to have it and we ought to, you know, really roll up our sleeves and talk about all of the, you know, the issues, the pros, the cons, the revenues, the costs and everything and make some decisions. I mean, because we can talk about it for the next two or three years and nothing ever gets done.
And that's why it's brought up.
And I appreciate that and I think maybe we should sit down with each of the departments and let's, let's kind of tear this thing apart and come up with some proposals.
The biggest, the biggest problem when Steve, you know, if you talk with Steve about this too, is they're volunteers. So usually when we get a call, it's Plymouth that's there first.
Well, that, that's the kind of information that we'll have to tease out.
You know, that's what, I was just going to say, that's something that's really important. I know we pay them a lot of money. I know it's, you know, we've paid them a lot of money for years, but we've got to remember what we get from them too.
That's right.
But maybe rather than just Ashland doing their own, maybe somehow we could work with Plymouth so that we don't pay Plymouth as much, that Ashland has, you know, their ambulance that they can use.
Reduce that cost.
But a lot of the problem is, it used to be that they worked in town, that a lot of the firemen worked in town, but they don't now. So that's the reason that they can't get there, you know?
Again, we're sitting here speculating about may or may not be the case and, and I don't have the information.
But this is true about people not working in town.
I think we should sit down with the people who do have that information and, I mean, like Chief Heath here.
We will.
And set up a meeting with him and, you know, put everything on the table because I'm not going to speculate about what's going to happen. I can only guess.
Yeah, because we could go on forever.
We could go on forever.
Right. And we had a meeting with Steve before, so maybe we should have another one.
I think we should. And that's just, that's just one department. You have nothing else to do, right?
4th of July.
But, but again, we should make a list of all of the possibilities and then sit down with the people who have the information. Each one of the departments, police, fire, public works, we've got areas in all of those departments where we might be able to save some money and reduce the taxpayer burden because clearly the town has spoken they don't want to pay anymore.
I can tell you what's going to save, what's going to help the tax burden is the revenue. That's what's going to help, so.
Well, we're approaching it from many perspectives. I mean, the economic development committees.
That's what's really, I mean, you can cut as much as you want, but that doesn't affect it.
Many times, there's no one.
There is no one, we have to look at all of the areas.
And it's mostly the revenue that affects.
And we have to look at it all.
We do. We absolutely have to look at it all. And I applaud you for bringing it up.
With the way that we could increase revenue.
Yeah.
But you were talking about the health insurance. I just wanted to say that the employees now are paying 7.5% and in January, they're going to pay 10%. So we have, you know, worked on them paying a certain percentage. Also, they've got a higher deductible. They've got a $500 deductible, you know. I mean, my feeling is, as far as, I know we need to lower the taxes, but as far as health insurance, if you give them a raise and then you pay them, which we did, and then you pay, make them pay more for health insurance, they're losing. So I guess we have to consider that.
To have to say conversely of that, no offense to any employees, but I can tell you in the private sector world, okay? And I can only say this, people are paying higher contribution rates and higher deductibles on their health plans.
Some are, some aren't.
I'm telling you, in general, that's the case. In general, that's the case because the premiums for health insurance has continued to skyrocket.
So what you, you know, what you have to, in my opinion, what you have to.
And I think we have to assess that. That's all I'm saying is we have to look at every aspect to just see if there is anything there. And again, I, I'm not looking to put people that are working for this town into any greater hardship, but I think we have to look at every, I'm sorry.
I don't think we need to speculate on this. I think we need.
We do. We need details.
We need, yeah, I don't, I think we can move on. We've got the details of what we want to do.
Okay, so, and it's the same thing with the options, the health options. You were exploring some options, Paul, just to see what choices.
Yeah. I'm not recommending that we go to another carrier, but I'm recommending that we look within Health Trust and see what various, yeah. We have a very good plan and PB 15 is a very good plan, but we should look at alternative deductibles and things like that.
So maybe what we should do, because we can sit here and speculate and never get anywhere tonight, is for each of us to go and think about and come up with a list and put it on the table. And then we'll look at the list and say, okay, we're going to tackle this one, we're going to tackle that one, we're going to get this information. Just go down the list and see if anything is viable.
Do we have anything that we could bring up that might increase revenues?
Economic development, obviously.
Economic development, that's going to take time.
Take some time.
Yes, it will.
And I've talked about this with other people. Ashland doesn't have the land like a lot of other towns do, okay, to develop. But my thought was, like vacant lots, like the one by Tommy Peters on Main Street there where the guy, we had him take the home down, places like that, vacant lots that people live out of town, they're not doing anything with them, those are the people that have to be contacted because they're just sitting there. So something could be done with those.
Right.
But as far as extra land, Ashland doesn't have it.
And I think that those pieces of land will probably be one of the subjects that the economic development And I think that those pieces of land will probably be one of the subjects that the economic development could look at, because they're not going to be just looking at the businesses that are here, but, you know, ways to build or bring in new businesses, so, I mean, that's certainly going to be on the table.
So what are the actionable steps that we can take after having this discussion right now? What would be the next actionable step?
Well, I think, I think we determine, one is, we can certainly ask for an analysis for the ambulance process. Two, we can at least look at the health options, contributions, deductibles. I think we can, and again, I'm not sure what we can do with outsourcing or regionalization or collabora, collaborate, collaboration with other communities on other things. I know I'll ask this about outsourcing, several years ago, there was an opportunity for us to outsource Public Works to utility partners. And I had heard that utility partners offered us two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the equipment and would manage the maintenance of the community for approximately forty or fifty thousand dollars less a year. Can somebody give me some info on that?
Yeah, the savings was in the administrative area, and it would have been about fifty thousand dollars, which at that time, the Board of Selectmen didn't think that was a viable option.
So why can't we revisit that?
Because of some of the things that were involved in it, some of the things that, I don't have the information with me, Paul, but if you remember right, some of the things that we, the questions that we asked utility partners said, no, that's not included, no, that's not included, no, that's not.
The two things that were not included were winter and summer maintenance, salt and sand.
So we need to bring that on the table.
When you say winter and summer maintenance, you mean?
Well, it was basically.
We would still have to purchase our own salt.
Yeah, and you could do that now in a shared arrangement with another community, which is something I think Tim is, we're going to.
So again, is an actionable item, something that we could at least look at that?
Bring them in, bring them in for presentation.
He'll be doing that action.
And having a, yeah, bring them in for presentation and we'll grill them, you know, pros and cons.
Anybody got anything else?
No, again, I would suggest that we all go back and think about the things that, to put on the list, that we can start, I mean, there might be things that we haven't brought up tonight that will still come forward, but something we definitely need to think about.
All right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Jeanette, you were first, go ahead.
When Fran said, put things on the list, I think what happens is, we put things on the list and then, you know, then we table it, and then we table it. I think if we're going to put things on the list, if we can check ourselves with different facts and have that information there for people, that it would help out.
I'm just saying, put on the list to discuss.
We need to bring it up.
But I think, I think with the list, I think you can put the list, but then I think you need to have the facts there with you and say, well, this is the reason it's on the list, because what happens is, we all have a list, we all have all these things on it, but then it doesn't get done, so.
Well, I think tonight, it got brought up, we have some items that we're going to look into to get facts about.
And that's what I'm saying, when we do that, then we need to have the facts.
We can make decisions that, you know.
But we do need the facts if we're going to have ideas.
I think we're just talking in circles.
Yeah, we are.
I think we need to move on.
Okay.
We've got the idea.
So you have, no, we'll leave that be. Okay, select board items. Steve, I'll defer to you, you have a number of items you wanted to start off with.
Yes. Just a quick update on the BMSI, which, as you all know, is the accounting software system that we use. We had asked about the possibility of having the reports done available in Excel so that we can do better analysis of them, and we have learned that that can be exported to Excel, and we, I've just recently received an Excel document of that, that I'm going to try to work with. It does seem like it is better than it once was, according to Brenda, but I still have some areas of opportunity to make it a more workable Excel sheet.
See, I found that Excel sheet not as informative as the BMSI report, because it didn't have certain category totals, department totals, and I don't know if you saw that.
I agree.
So for me, as a user, looking at that initial report, as she produced converting to file, I found it not as user-friendly, even though I like working with Excel a lot more than I like working with BMSI.
Right, and the follow-up to that is, I'm going to communicate with BMSI to see if it should be easier to do that, because in the initial conversation with them, they felt like it was something that should be easily exportable into Excel in a workable fashion that would replicate what the BMSI piece looks like. So we need to just see if maybe there's something that we need to do differently to make that happen, so that's what I will attempt to do.
You'll continue to work on that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
The other item that I had on there was, I was just inquiring about if, to have a select board business card, do we have any consistency in the format that we have for that, or do we all, each kind of do our own thing, and if we do, shouldn't there be a consistent format? What is the current situation?
I can always say, I asked Pat to get me cards.
And me, and I got some.
So Fran and I were ordered at the same time.
And I think they're all the same, I think.
It's just the town logo, simple white card with blue writing.
It doesn't even have the town logo on it.
Mine has the building. If she did the same one that Paul did, it's got the building on it.
I'll show you what mine look like. There's no logo, just says.
Mine's got the building on it.
So that wasn't the first.
No, hers has the right.
Has yours got the building, the Town of Ashland building?
She's got the little logo.
Oh, mine does.
Yeah.
But mine.
My health officer one has the logo, but not this one.
I just cross it out, write the right phone number.
So do.
So do we have a?
We don't.
Standard, no. Would that not be able?
What do you have for cards, Paul?
Yours are fancier.
I just know that when you go to specific events where you're talking, and someone asks, can I have your card as a select board member, I think it would be good for us to be able to hand that to.
She is a good way to get fairly inexpensively.
Yeah, and I didn't get a lot, but it's more than enough for what I need.
Well, those I did myself.
Oh, you did, oh, all right, thanks.
I would do this, if I felt that I needed cards, I'd just send them up myself.
Okay, next, she'll get some up for you, because I don't think there is any structured, nobody has the same cards, obviously.
And we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay?
It appears to be.
I don't think they have that enough.
No, but we're good with everyone having their own version of a select board card.
I went to her, I went through the town office and got them, and she found a, I thought was a fair card.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess I would just say, make the same card that the last two versions were, I guess.
Next.
One of the questions that I had brought up was, I know that we're working with the, what's the name of the computer company that?
CCS.
CCS, in regards to the cloud services that go through the end of this calendar year, and then we'll be looking to do something beyond that. And one of the questions I had proposed was, have we done any analysis of anybody other than that one company? And I thought that maybe going into next fiscal year, we might want to try to look at other options, because there's, I mean, there's two hundred and thirty-four towns in New Hampshire, and I've got to believe that some number of them have cloud services other than that one company. So would it make sense, since this is going to be something that is most likely going to be a contract that's going to be over ten thousand dollars, is it something that we should put out to bid in some way? And one of the companies that I just happened to mention, because I just went online, and I noticed there was one called Mainstate Technologies, and I have not researched it, I don't know a whole lot about it, I looked at their website, they seem to be fairly good at what they do. One thing I know from, when you're working with IT-related things, you have to be very specific that you're comparing apples to apples, because if you're not, the cost could be significantly different, so my only thought is, do we want to try to solicit some other possible bids on what we need for next year?
I am all for having more than one estimate.
We means Paul, I assume.
I would assume that would mean Paul, yes?
I think it's a good idea.
So I already did some research, which I've sent, I've sent to you. It is Don Jutton's company, it's MRI that's.
It's doing this.
Yeah, it's in the same framework as.
Is that who we had before?
So Campton put theirs out to bid, as did.
That's the one that charges all on those.
As did Northfield.
Okay.
And in each case, when I found out, they were twenty percent higher than CCS.
Okay.
But Mike Vally, who was here giving his presentation the last time, said, next to CCS, of course, Mainstate's the best, so, but you're right, if it's an opportunity to see, it doesn't hurt to put it out.
We wouldn't find anybody.
I understand that.
And not only that, sometimes, even though you may not go with another company, they'll bring something to the table that'll make you more educated on what the process is.
Very correct.
I just think we need multiple proposals.
I would agree.
So, Paul, if we could just, we have till, you know, near the end of the year.
MRI is Mainstate, is that what you said?
It's the same company?
It's part of his, part of MRI, yeah, yeah.
And to the best of your knowledge, there's no other companies out there, that's what we could explore?
Not that, I, no.
You've looked at.
I've looked, yeah.
It's got to be others.
There's tiny little companies.
But he said he was doing eighteen or twenty communities, there's a lot of communities that.
For CCS?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's a lot of communities, so if he's only doing twenty communities.
A hundred or two hundred.
The larger, the larger ones, like Newmarket.
Mainstate.
Do people on the, in the Portsmouth area, which I.
Anyway, I just think, again, like you suggested, I just think we should just explore proposals.
Okay.
Next.
I've got one thing, Mr. Chairman, Jeanette's got one.
Monthly reports.
Hi, that's me.
Go ahead.
Last time, I had asked that, we have monthly reports from the building inspector, the health officer, and the plumbing inspector, because when I looked at some of the things that were on the shelf from the plumbing inspector, there were dates back to September, so I asked Paul to check on everything, so I'm just wondering what happened there.
Those are written reports?
Yes. Paul?
We've never had any reports from the plumbing inspector, and in fact, it's very difficult to find the plumbing inspector at this time, and I think at a meeting the other day, the Land Use Review Committee, we decided that at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we're going to have to advertise for a plumbing inspector.
I think we need to get on that.
So what you're saying is, there were requests for plumbing inspections that had not been completed?
There was, on the shelf, I just happened to look, and one of them was dated way back to September, that needed to go to a house, and the thing is, I don't know if everything was put in, I'm assuming it was, and it was probably put in and not inspected. I didn't look at the others, there were maybe nine or ten others, but it bothered me that that was back to September.
So what's the process that we have in place or not to verify that everything is followed up, or?
Well, usually, that's why, you know, we need reports, because that way, we can check and say, hey, what's going on here, you know, we haven't had a report for three months.
Jeanette's right, the previous building inspector was very good at handling his Excel spreadsheet and gave us open cases, closed cases, both from a building inspector's perspective and a code enforcement officer. Mr. Badger has offered to help our building inspector with a tutorial on Excel spreadsheets, and I think from Jim, we will get that going forward.
Now, that's what I was thinking about, about separating the kinds of duties according to need.
I just wanted to overcome any possible conflict of leadership.
Will you play nice in sandbox?
Because you can't have a conflict of leadership, correct? Steve, some thoughts for you?
I think I might have been the one who proposed this, okay? I think there's a lot to be done, and I did say, too, that I think that it would benefit both of us if there was a clear job description of what the expectations of this board is in regard to.
I have one now.
The position.
Yep.
And we can meet, as we said, I will have more time available, and we can meet and, you know, move us forward into a direction if you want us to go.
Yep.
But one thing that concerns me is, in the heat of battle, you two guys may disagree, and somebody has to be the final. Well, they've got an exercise room downstairs, we'll duke it up.
The whole thing is, it's not about, for example, if this were, if this is, say, an emergency involving police, I would defer to the police chief, I mean, the idea is, he's just more of a coordinator than he is a general, he's not a general, the person running the EOC is really a manager coordinating the efforts of all these different entities working together, it's called unified.
But we're not talking about.
It's unified command is the approach.
We're not talking about running the library together.
I understand.
We're talking about a situation where things are happening faster than either one of you or us have anticipated. Plain and simple, I don't play on a computer. He does, I don't play on a computer. On a computer. He does, so he can communicate directly with the state. In the meantime, I can be taking radio or whatever's coming in, too.
I think you provided some really good examples, Lee, when you were talking about the type of emergency might bring you to the field, and a different type would bring Steve to the field, and that makes perfect sense, because, you know.
As long as you're both coordinating with one another, that's the key.
Yeah.
And a good coordinator, you know, is going to listen to the people who are the authority in their specialty. It would be senseless not to. We've done it from time to time, and not, we've never opened the EOC, but there have been times when we've had.
Well, we did when they did that.
Exercise.
And we coordinated our efforts.
Yeah.
Teamwork.
I think it makes great sense, because you both bring to the table different skill sets that would be incredibly valuable, should we have an emergency.
I agree.
I think we would love to have you both.
I would, too.
And I don't think either one of us had a problem with that.
I'll make a motion that we have co-chairs.
I'll second it.
I was just going to say that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Congratulations.
Now, first duty is, can we get this updated?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get together on that. I did ask Patsy if they still had it on the computer up at our home, and I don't know if they still have these things on the computer up top.
I would think they would.
Okay, we'll get you the updates and.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know about that.
Thank you, I mean that. Okay. Next thing is the furnace room bulkhead repairs. As you see, we have two estimates.
Yeah.
That are fairly close in description and not too bad in price difference, although the higher priced one seems to have, Eagle, so we can share.
Okay.
The higher priced one seems to have a little bit more detail, and I guess, Paul, I would ask you to, you've discussed this with both companies?
We tried to get apples for apples, so you let them look at the concern there, and one contractor said, well, the doors have to be replaced. One contractor was simply just kind of, you know, power washed the shingle there and on the side and repainted. The roof is a problem, the roof is a problem, it has to be done, so, I mean, they're both equally good. Mark Vasiliyan worked on the booster cup when we got the grant from USDA Rural. Paul Bellamy has done the flashing on the roof of the town office, which wasn't done in two thousand and nine, so they're very familiar, and they're both very good people.
Is there anything in the estimate for twenty-eight seventy-five that you feel is lacking?
I don't, no, not for the type of work that needs to be.
Okay, so can I?
Sure.
Can I ask the question of, replace any damaged wood and rotted, damaged and rotted wood, any, any at all, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
He hasn't put clean up there, but he does clean up.
What he didn't do, yeah, okay, so that is something, he said cleanup.
Yeah, and of course he does clean up.
The other thing he stated was replacement of corner boards, rake boards, soffit, and fascia boards, where he mentions nothing about that. Do we have to be concerned about that?
No, no, we don't.
But he says all.
But he says replace any damaged and rotted wood.
And that's why I said any at all, correct?
He wasn't going to, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a recommendation?
They're both equally good, I mean, it's a question of cost.
So if that's the case, then we.
Then go with a lower cost.
Right, unless there's a reason not to, then no.
Because they both worked for the town before.
But I, you know, I would put in the contract to ensure that he cleans up, I mean, you said he will, but let's make sure it's all right.
He sure will.
Okay, so do you need a motion from us, or just a consensus? Do you need a motion to accept one of the estimates?
I'd like a motion that we accept the estimate for twenty-eight seventy-five.
For MAV remodel?
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Sorry, you're not fast enough.
That's a pretty good price.
It is, right, excellent, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Well, I just wondered, is there any, you know, when you renovate an old house, you don't know what you're going to find when you.
Underneath?
Under, yeah.
I'm sure that's not going to be a problem.
They said any and all rotten wood.
It's right.
This is a good.
Pretty soon you're redoing electrical wiring.
Well, then we'll have to discuss it again.
Is that a possibility, that there are other things?
There's probably one light switch in there, and that's about it, otherwise, it's just a shadow that the stairway.
To go down into the.
That's probably got two prongs in it.
It probably does.
The heating system.
And it's probably got BX cable.
Probably does.
Probably does.
And so that would have to be replaced. Yes? I mean, that would have to...
It isn't on the list.
What is the light switch?
He's not dealing with electricity.
No.
He's dealing with the exterior stuff.
But you are doing a renovation, and you have to bring that up to code, do you know?
Yes, correct.
So that's...
And I have to get a permit for it.
But that would be a different contractor.
But they said to put that in here if they felt that it needed that.
Would that be a different contractor if it's electrical work?
Yeah, yeah. He can't...
Right.
He can't run an electrical...
So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
I think we're fine with that.
So the final cost, it may end up being...
One never knows.
I love it more, but I'm sure there's not a lot of electricity. It's probably one switch or a light down in the...
There is only one bulb, yeah. One bulb.
Okay.
Okay, so any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're all set with the bulkhead. We'll move forward. Finally getting that fixed. Okay, next, we have the Ashland Economic Development Committee, the final draft for us to approve with a couple of minor changes or thoughts. And one was brought up at the very onset. Do you have, need a copy, Jeanette?
I didn't bring mine with me.
I looked it over, but I didn't.
May I have a next one, Norma?
Yeah, here. In the back of that one.
Thank you.
The only thing, Martine brought this up when I sent it out for future publication, was the very first sentence, which says, "The Ashland Economic Development Committee" formed, okay? Just thought the word "was formed" should be appropriate.
Fine.
No, that's good.
If any other thing that was brought up by Susan was in the second page. Did you find it? I'll see. Second page of the...
The text, yeah, under section four?
Under number four, conflict of interest. The question was, do we have a conflict of interest policy?
And we got a copy of that.
We have a copy of the employees' conflict of interest.
There isn't one for the committee.
That's right. So this really doesn't apply to the committees. It applies to employees.
Okay.
Right.
So I would think we would just delete that little red question mark.
Okay.
And pound sign.
Okay.
Parenthesis, yes.
Yep.
And maybe consider developing in the future a conflict of interest policy.
I was just gonna say that. You might want to, or think about doing it.
Yep.
And then we can provide that subsequently to the other committees and boards, okay?
Makes sense.
So with just those two minor changes, can we sign off on this for final, final copy?
Do we need a motion?
We already approved the rules.
We already approved it. Just sign off on it. Fine. I would, great.
Correct?
Correct.
So what we'll do is, come on, which page was it? Here somewhere. We'll just have this copy revised with the two minor changes, okay? I'll tell you what, Phil, I'll just send around this. Do you want me to give this back to you, Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you, Norma.
Please, can I, I'll be on this track here.
Oops, sorry.
There you go.
Didn't see that my name was already there. Sorry, Jeanette.
Sorry. I've done that before, too.
Just put the next line down.
Before we get off of the topic, I would just like to, you know, talk about opening up, you know, we're gonna have a five-member steering committee. And it sounds like myself as the liaison for the select board, and I believe Cheryl Cox, the representative from the planning board.
Correct.
And, you know, we now need to go and find five steering committee members. And we're gonna make an effort to call a lot of the businesses. But I'd also like to just publicly communicate that there are five positions available for anyone that's part of the Ashland business community or a resident of Ashland that's interested in serving.
Now, who are the ones in the back? There's some in the back there. She gave the names in the back.
Those were individuals that Susan had asked previously if they had an interest.
Because Kendall B. Hughes is still interested, because I had contacted him before.
So I think that's, they'll follow up on that.
And we'll communicate with, yep. And then, and then take letters of interest from people over the next few weeks, and we'll plan on doing a first meeting. We'll get a date set for a first meeting, probably the second or third week of June, maybe. And by that time, we should hopefully have some appointments for a meeting, so we can begin to, begin this process.
So as a side note, so we can officially have her recruited, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Cheryl Cox to the, as an ex officio, she was appointed by the planning board as an ex officio, member of the Economic Development Committee, representing the planning board.
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, Cheryl.
All right, Cheryl.
Ready, you can sign this sometime. Now, now you can get going with him. Get some other members recruited.
Yes.
Remember, she has to go into town office and be sworn in.
So you go into the side, into the town office, sign on this, and be sworn in, okay?
Susan and I knew on Wednesday. She has a lot of information. She's put together some of the times she read that and rolled up the spreadsheet, the numbers that you said that you called.
Yes.
Maybe her and I can talk about the others, the business hours, the contracts.
Okay.
Is Susan still gonna be a member of this committee as well?
Susan, we're encouraging her to possibly go into as one of the five members of the steering.
She's done all this work. I hope, I hope you can talk her into it.
I strongly encourage her.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Don't we use to sign more than one copy?
She told me she's done all too many.
I thought I saw...
Well, yeah, but this is...
Now, what they do is just make a copy.
Oh, I see.
Okay, anything else on the Economic Development Committee? Okay, Time Warner Cable. Time Warner Cable, as you may have read from emails, has, our attorney that represents us in negotiations, has basically come to the conclusion after discussing with Time Warner's attorney, that we should sign the contract. If I could just look at that first slide.
Yeah, the meat of it is in the middle of the...
And basically, it's because their, Time Warner's construction team went to Blue Sky and noted four homes and noted that it just does not merit the financial cost to install the cable.
Also, Norma, and after talking with Paul, I guess Mr. Latulip had a chance a while ago to fill out some paperwork for them and never filled it out. So I think that's some of it, too.
Some of what?
Well, the surveys, when we did the surveys, when...
And it wasn't done.
You know, we didn't get a reply in, so...
Survey of...
We sent them out before the public hearing. We sent surveys out. If you remember when we had a meeting at the Booster Club when Ron Cianella came, and we sent surveys out to all the people and said...
On Blue Sky Drive?
No, whole town, yeah, to get their input. Mr. Chairman, the only three, the three changes in the contract that you saw that I sent to you from the previous draft that we looked at, is the effective date has been put in on page three. Page six, the term is seven years. And page thirty-five there is the signatures with the date. So our attorney...
The effective date would be again?
May nineteenth.
Have you followed up with Donald Latulip as to why he didn't?
Yes, I have.
And his response was?
He, you know, he's been doing one home at a time. And we said there are, it could take, we don't know how long it'll take to get the other five homes completed. And, to put it mildly, the, our attorney, franchise attorney, felt that we can't hold, to be held to ransom any longer, because we've got an obligation to the residents to provide them with cable.
And who knows if cable's gonna be around?
And obviously, Time Warner came back and said, we can't hold them hostage for this kind of activity. Our attorney did say, I recommend that at the next board meeting, the topic of renewal franchise be listed on the agenda and motion made, seconded, we need to execute it.
Our attorney being?
Our attorney being Catherine Miller. And the only thing, I guess I have a question before we go further in this. I just, again, reviewed the contract. I know we've had a public hearing and everything. But I just, I wanna just read this, and you, please fill me in on your thoughts. Franchisee agrees to continue to provide to the town at no cost to the town or its subscribers the ability to receive on the basic tier any PEG access channels from the town of Plymouth. And I read this because I have recently had a lot of individuals come up to me and say, wish I could see your meetings on TV, but I can't anymore since Time Warner converted the local access channel to digital. And anybody that has a non-digital TV no longer receives those.
They have to buy the box.
But, and they have to buy the box. What I just read doesn't appear to you guys to read that Time Warner's supposed to provide that access no charge?
No, that's what I, we asked. No caterers, no. No, they gotta go buy the box.
And that's been known for a long time, that people who didn't have digital were going to have to buy the box.
They told them they had one.
Yeah, yeah. I've known that for a long time.
Okay, so that's all I wanted to make sure.
You said Plymouth, and then we're in that category.
Yeah.
No, actually, the channels from Plymouth, and obviously, our channel is from Plymouth. But the key to me was at no cost to the town or its subscribers.
But the digital box is something different.
Provided digitally.
I just wanna make sure. So, we need a motion to accept the Time Warner contract?
How many people do you suppose that shuts out?
There were a number of individuals that had converted to flat screen LED digital TVs.
But what is the number? You can say the very number.
I don't know. I can only tell you that I heard from four or five in the last ten days. Four or five. I just heard from them. So that's why I figured I could look and bring it to your attention.
Okay.
Do you have three there, Norma?
One, two, three.
Oh, you got, yeah, good.
So...
I'll make a motion to accept the contract from Time Warner Cable for the seven-year period.
Effective five nineteen.
Effective five nineteen.
And the other towns are gonna be also going seven years?
They are. They're held up at the moment because of things like build outs, the build out in Plymouth, up at the fairgrounds, and I guess...
And we were ten years before.
I know that.
They're still working on that.
Yeah.
But we're all gonna be seven years.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, we...
We don't know what really they're gonna be.
Yeah, okay.
Because they haven't negotiated that point yet. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have to sign three copies here?
Yes, please.
I can mark you at once.
Yeah.
Okay. Wait. First page got to you yet, Jeanette?
No.
Steve could pass it on instead of...
Well, I, I held him up because he also needed my pen, so I signed all three. So I was a bottleneck here.
Okay, the next thing, we, any other old business from anyone?
Did you want to bring the appointments up for the CIP committee under old business? Or where did you want to bring them up?
I was gonna bring it up at the end, start with items. Okay, new business, Northern Pass. We're, I take it you all were provided with information from Paul about Northern Pass. Walter sent an email to the different towns in the area wanting to know if there was any kind of cooperative effort regarding Northern Pass. And I do know, again, as we know, in 2012, this community voted in a petition warrant article 285 to 114 against Northern Pass. So the question is, does this board want to take any cooperative position or position to the Department of Energy?
May I ask a question? Did you go to the meeting?
I did.
Yeah, could you share?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There were three speakers. One was Jason Reimers, who is the, who is a lawyer for an environmental firm in Concord. Another was Kenneth Kimball from the Appalachian Mountain Club. He's a research director. The third was Kristof Kuchesny, who works for the Conservation Law Foundation in Concord. I have, I went online, because all of them were recorded, and I'll ask Pat to put this information in the minutes. So if you want to go online and listen to what these people have to say, this is how you can get a look. The gist of it is that Northern Pass has probably got a billion dollars behind this project, which is probably more than we can muster. And that's probably true of every single, I mean, it's, it's true of every organization or individual who opposes the project, and there are a lot of them. But if you listen to these videos and, or audios, and they're each about twenty minutes long, so it's an hour. And, but the gist of it is that it's a David and Goliath situation. And if, if town, for instance, decides to become an intervenor, and you can do this at no cost, and you make a presentation, you have to make sure that it's a presentation that you know something about. You don't wanna, you don't wanna be the town of Ashland challenging whether or not Northern Pass has the financial viability to do this. But you could go and say that the town of Ashland has done some research, research on the impact of property taxes, and that our opinion, if this turns out to be true, is that the impact of whatever Northern Pass might pay the town is less than a town would lose by having reduction in property taxes. So that's something that, that the town can provide if it, if it happens to have that evidence. It's a credible...
That evidence was already, has already been presented in the past.
Well, this is a whole set of hearings coming along. And those, those three...
Audios.
Audios will give you the steps that Northern Pass has to go through and where the stumbling blocks are. The biggest stumbling block is that they have, they, their application cannot be accepted unless they can prove that they have title to the line, which they do not have, and may never have. And that may be, that's gonna be a court contest. A comment was made that Northern Pass has signed up practically every single law firm in the state except this one. And so it's, there's gonna be a legal battle, and it's gonna be protracted, and it's gonna pit Goliath against David-sized towns. And how that plays out, we don't know. But... But, if it comes to a coalition or coalescing of towns around a particular issue and a desire to hire somebody to help them out, these towns, I mean, it won't happen without a little bit of money. So, those are the things that, that need to be thought about, that this is gonna be a, it's gonna be a nasty fight, and that's the reality. And comment was made that, from both the standpoint of the Appalachian Mountain Club and the Conservation Law Foundation, although those organizations are pretty high-powered and do have expertise in, in certain topics, they don't have an unlimited amount of money. They got some money, but they're, they're, they've got their fingers in a lot of dykes.
So, the, the key point that they feel that there may be an opportunity on relates to title of the land? Or what are the key points that they feel are arguable?
Specifically, Northern Pass claims that, that they are going to bury a line along a town road. Well, the Society for Protection of New Hampshire Forest happens to own either the land or easement on both sides to the center of the road.
Okay.
The town has an easement to put a road over there. They do not have an easement for utilities. Now, how that gets, you know, that'll be challenged in court.
Right.
Because utility easements are a normal, are a normal complement to putting in a road.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to, but it's not, there's nothing that gives, there's nothing in writing that gives anybody the right to put a utility corridor along this road. So, they don't have, they cannot say, "We have clear title to this road," whether, and that's gonna be fought out in court, and how it comes out is, is not certain. Any case, that's, that's a problem they gotta face.
Are there some number of towns that already signed up for some sort of a coalition to?
I don't believe so, because the meeting I went to, which you have a list of the towns and the people who were there, I stretch it from north of the notch down to.
Franklin.
To Franklin, yeah. I don't know if they would.
Go by, as you're making all the decisions. So, if we are to adopt something like this, and reading through these, there isn't anything that's in here that I would not agree we should strive to do. So, if we as a group feel that these are things that we strive to do, then I think it's valid to have that, but we have, it's important to understand that as we make different decisions, it's good to have this available and say, "Are we living by these values that we're saying to the public we want to live by?" So, I know that's kind of like only half answering the question.
That's both sides of the question.
And so, I, I personally like the idea of identifying values that we wanna try to live by. And you know what? You never do anything a hundred percent, but you strive towards those, looking at those values, and then as a board, we have to decide, are these decisions living by these in the best way we can?
Jeanette, your thoughts?
I agree as far as the values. I think there's some good ones here. Honesty and high ethical standards, friendly, fair, and responsive customer service, things like that. But I also think we have to remember that we're governed by the RSAs, and we have to remember that that's what the board has to go by. So, I'm a little concerned with like the mission and the vision that, that might interfere with what the RSA say. So, I, I like the values, but I think as far as the vision and the mission, I think the RSAs cover that anyway. So, I, you know, I don't think we need that. I like the values, but as far as anything else, I think, you know, all the RSAs, if you read any of the RSAs, we're governed by those, and, you know, we have to follow those anyway, so. I would, I would like to work on the values, though I think it would be good for the board to work on those.
Okay. My thoughts are, I think it's great to have, again, a set of values and have vision to guide to the future. I'm not sure if I would, if I agreed for it to be this elaborate or this verbose. I think more of a concise, all-encompassing statement that could be easily placed above, you know, our section of our website would, would do better. And, and I do think, you know, we all, we are, we are ruled by the RSAs, but we all have ideas on how we'd like to see this body move forward, and that's why I think it's a great idea in concept. I'm just not sure that I agree with all the information here. I do agree with all the information, but to place that above us.
If you can come up with a way to make this more concise, I'd be totally in support of that.
It's very difficult.
Because it is very difficult, and I, I tried to put all of the things that I felt were important to us as a board in there, realizing that it was probably a little verbose. And if we can streamline it and still capture the essence that, this is what we stand for, and this is how we intend to govern in an open, honest, collaborative way, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of that, because I would agree with you, this is probably more than we need.
One comment I made to my, in my email to Paul, a long time ago, my original email, was that, this has been written for the Board of Selectmen, but my, my comment was a question or maybe a suggestion or an observation. It really applies to everybody in town government. It ought to be, you know, we all ought to be working towards.
Be staying visions and values.
Careful financial stewardship, regardless of what board you happen to be on.
Right, but we can't write it for anybody but ourselves. You know, I, I agree with you, Phil. I think everybody should adopt a kind of a vision and a mission, but I can't write it for the planning board or any other commission. I can only write it for the Board of Selectmen, of which I am a part.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe if we look at what the mission specifically states, would that capsulize? It almost seems to capsulize the other pieces.
It does.
It's almost like you could take that mission, and that pretty much is.
It seems to me providing proactive leadership can trickle down to other boards. And so, I think that it is possible to make the statement that this applies to the town of Ashland, not just us, applies to, because in point of fact, to a certain degree, the, all the boards in town, except the elected ones, are answerable to us, at least they're appointed by us.
Right.
And they, upon appointment, they do become semi-autonomous, for sure, but reappointment depends upon the ability of those individuals to fulfill the, our expectations.
Yeah, and that's, and that, I kind of agree with that, and I kind of agree with, again, I just think this is verbose, I think it has a lot of info. I do really feel, and again, I know you feel the values are appropriate, I really felt the mission was the most appropriate, because it stated several things, proactive leadership, exercise, sound financial management, which is necessary, operated cost.
No, that's effective, not cost-effective.
Effective.
Oops.
And efficient government.
Oh, I don't have your comment.
And I would, I would say, period, that isn't a period, I think you have a comma. Plan for long-term capital needs and promote economic development and sustainable growth, period. Because that's all, this sentence.
Either that or you make each of those bullet points.
Well, that's what I mean, you change that after you say sustainable growth, put a period and then say, "We will collaborate with other government aid entities," which, there you go. So, I think it involves everything, it encompasses other.
Well, I was thinking of collaborate not only within the town, but external to the town, which we've talked about many times. That's, that's why I said other government entities, whether it be towns or state or federal government.
Sure. Again, it makes sense to me. So, I, I guess what I'd ask for is a consensus to move forward with continuing to work on this.
I would suggest that, you know, people go home and rework it themselves, you know, that I've provided a new framework, Paul, you know, set, started the ball rolling, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm sure you all have thoughts. If we can get this down to something that we can all live with, that would be fine.
Well, is there anything in this mission statement that anybody sees as something that we would not wanna be?
No, except I would like to go back and look at some of the RSAs, because I think some of this wording in the mission statement are within the RSAs. So, I'd like to go back, so like Fran said, let us, you know, look through that.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Why don't we, are you willing to move forward and look at?
Yeah, yeah. And make it more concise.
And I'll do the same, yeah.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Phil okay with that?
Okay, Phil?
I'm good.
Okay.
So, when would you like us to have that ready?
Might say, can we look at it and again, bring it up at the next meeting?
The next meeting?
Mm-hmm. Okay, the next thing on the old business agenda is just looking at the comparisons of the Town Beach proposal. So, we're exclusively just talking about the comparisons that were provided by Jim. Looking at the, the economics involved of the two proposals. And so, what we have is, we have the current staffing position as it was, which brings us to the total of $11,810.
Which was with the park open from eleven to four.
That's correct, eleven to four. Okay? That also doesn't include the concession stand.
Right.
So, you'd have to add another 1,700 in cost to that. So, that brings it up to 13,510. And the other thing that we'd have to see on this, and I thought we were gonna compare, the comparisons would be like, but they are not like, because again, the staffing on current is again, as you stated, eleven to four, I'm sorry, ten to four. And the number two scenario updated is from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Norm?
Yes.
If you have any questions?
Jim? Yes, please, join us. Pull the chair right up. And maybe you can explain it better than I am, I understand the calculations.
Explain it pretty well. The current spreadsheet that you have is just the guards, the gatekeepers from 10, 10 to 4, Monday through Friday.
And this is the model that we'd use last year?
That is correct.
Okay.
As, as the chair has mentioned, is that it does not include the concession area supplies. The hours are already accounted for, for the concession area, that would be within the regular operating hours.
Okay.
The revised second option, which I was asked to illustrate, had the, the option two, which was the gate, two gatekeepers from 10 to 8 with an overlap at two.
Two to four.
Right. And utilizing the third option, which gave the greatest coverage for the weekend, where there would be coverage from 12 to 6. So, there would be the two.
There would be double coverage from 12 to 7.
That is correct. And that was, that was for the weekends.
And based on your knowledge of the traffic on weekends, that's what you think is?
That is correct.
Is that appropriate?
That would, that would be appropriate for the, for the amount of people that use the beach at the time. Because we have an increase from the campground, as well as visitors coming up for the weekend. So, that's always increased time there. And that one did include the 17, 1,700 for the concession area.
Right.
And the concession area would only be open until 3 to accommodate cleanup and not to interfere with any of the local businesses for their prime serving times.
So, when you have possible revenue at 2112, that's the revenue that you'd get from the concession minus all the expenses of the staff and the supplies?
The, second one or?
It's your option two, where you have two gatekeepers with the concession stand. And you have, yeah, you have expected revenue based on last season's concession is 6,612. And then, down here, possible revenue. That's the, the total of the revenue we get from the concessions minus all of the expenses of supplies and staff.
I didn't calculate the staff.
So, I'm trying to figure out.
The supplies was.
Will you come up with that number?
Was 1,700, basically double that because of the markup on the supplies that we purchase.
Yeah.
This way, we make back the money from the concession supplies and the profit from that. And that was, that was added into the revenue side.
So, that's gonna remain the same either way, correct? That, that?
Yeah, that's right. That's almost can be.
That's a, that's a wash, that's an apple-for-apple comparison.
So, it's, it's 11,810 for, for scenario one?
Yeah.
Minus the concession.
Right. Yeah, that's not, right. But that's just for your, for the labor involved.
Yeah, labor.
For the labor involved.
What you stated was minus the concession. Labor's involved, but not the sale of the goods.
I understand.
Right, we're just looking at labor at this point.
So, if you look at the next scenario, it's basically 9,520 minus the 1,700.
Or 7,820.
If you wanna compare, yeah, for 7,820. So, you're looking at 7,820 versus 11,810, and in the second scenario, you're open till eight.
So, it's $4,000 difference.
The only thing I would, I'm running down, I'm realizing that there are people who want guards.
Correct.
And there is the option two. I like the fact that this beach is staffed till 8:00 PM. That seems to me that's logical, gatekeepers. I know there are people who are in favor of having lifeguards there for a period of time. I'm not, personally, I don't see why 4 o'clock is the cutoff time. Seems to me supper time is a more logical time to end the lifeguards. But I'm just thinking that, just for discussion purposes, because I think we're gonna have this discussion in two weeks, as to whether or not there are people who wanna have lifeguards. And it would be helpful to have that combined on one sheet. I mean, I would go for the second alternative here, because I like the hours. But I'm just thinking that it's not, it's really not possible to make an argument financially about having guards or not having guards, because obviously, with the guards, it's 11,000, without the, without the guards, 9,000, that's not a lot of money.
Well, 7,800.
Yeah.
When you're comparing same.
Right, 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 7,800, 7,800. So, that's 4,000.
3,999.
So, I mean, that's not a, a critical sum. But I just think that that information ought to be on here, because I do think my perception of, of this issue is it's not over. And I think that information should be presented. I, again, I like the, I like the four, I like the hours of the second proposal to 8:00 PM, it just makes sense to me.
One of the, one of the other aspects, if I may interject.
Please do.
Is that if you have the guards on till 4.
Yeah.
Which still provides that traditional window of safety for families, daycare groups and stuff to come in, the guards still leave at their regular time, as they worked last year, but then you maintain your gatekeepers until the 8, which is, I think, somewhere where you were looking at, Phil.
Yeah.
And the other option is we leave the bathrooms open and then close them up at 8, which you do run the risk of vandalism, however you're supplying the bathrooms at that time.
I think it's important, yeah. Well, I just, again, I run up against the logic of sudden, of 4:00 PM being the time when.
window of safety for families, daycare groups and stuff to come in, the guards still leave at their regular time as they worked last year, but then you maintain your gatekeepers until the 8, which is, I think, somewhere where you were looking at, Phil.
Yeah.
And the other option is we leave the bathrooms open and then close them up at 8, which you do run the risk of vandalism. However, you're supplying the bathrooms at that time.
Well, I just, again, I run up against the logic of 4:00 PM being the time when there's no need for a lifeguard. I have stated before, I don't think there is a need for a lifeguard before 4:00 PM. But I also realize that there are people who disagree with me and they may, they may impress that that's important.
In putting together this updated scenario with the guards, consensus from the board, what time would you like to see guards till?
Well, I mentioned.
I don't think we should have.
I agree, Steve. I mean, I've been saying we didn't think 90% of the beaches in the world don't have lifeguards.
I'm trying to cover as many.
In my position, there's been no lifeguard. But I also realize that I'm not, I don't speak for everybody in saying that.
Nope. That's why I'm trying to look at every single.
So I would, so one of my criticisms of the guard is why isn't it at 4:00 PM in the middle of the afternoon prior to the, one of the major, from what you tell me, a lot of people show up at 4:00 PM. And so that's why I'm thinking beyond 4:00 PM.
Yeah.
But again, I'm not arguing for lifeguards. I'm just saying that this is a discussion that I don't think is over.
Right. I mean, I can put forward the financial information as best as possible to illustrate each point.
I think what we'd like to see, just a thought, is again, a comparison that shows the true estimate, okay? Comparing what you've done here. Okay, so I think you've provided us with the second scenario.
Yeah.
That's pretty firm, okay? So we understand that. Take that second scenario, integrate two lifeguards.
I will do.
But you also, at the same time, could take away some of the gatekeeper duty, I believe. Would you need to have three people around at the same time?
Two people watching the water, one person at the gate.
Okay, I just think, and again, I voted against having lifeguards, but I know that we have people that are speaking for it, and I think we need to understand the full impact.
I will integrate those two options.
Are we even interested in seeing them?
We should know. We should have the numbers.
We should have the numbers.
I think you can't, you can't say, well, you know, by using these figures, these sheets, you can't say, oh, geez, it's only a couple more thousand dollars to provide lifeguards because we're dealing with apples and oranges.
Right.
But that's, and it would be nice to see, I like alternative two, and if we could see.
I would like to see exactly what we could get into with option A or option B, exactly what the financial consequence expense would be with option A and option B, with all things considered for option A and option B. That way we will be looking at apples to apples.
So basically what you're saying is add two lifeguards to scenario B?
Exactly.
That's right, and that's scenario C.
And then I will.
Scenario C.
Okay.
B, B2.
And I would just like to say, looking to the future, whatever we decide for this year, is we don't really know what the town wants. We know what a few vocal people have stated, pro and con lifeguards, because the people who are passionate come here and they speak. We need to think about how we're really going to find out what matters to the whole town. Is it the expenditures? Is it, you know, some feeling of safety? Whatever it is, we need to figure out a way to really understand what the town wants, not what a few selective people want. And that includes us.
And I do, and I will say, I've heard from a few people, both.
I have too.
For and against.
I have too.
So I have to tell you, I've heard from both sides.
And it happens to be a situation where, like we had the raft removed.
Which made it a lot safer.
A few years, no, a few years ago, we had the raft removed for water quality testing.
Yeah.
Because it was a dependent variable that I was able to control.
Yeah.
And that one summer, yes, we received a lot of complaints that the raft was out.
Right.
And I explained why. And the raft went back because the results were inconclusive.
Right.
So this may be one of those transition years as well.
It might be.
But if there's.
And we also need to think about any other way we can to make the beach safe. I know somebody pointed out to me that the swimming lane is way out, so you have to get over your head before you can get there. Maybe the swimming lane could go from the shore out so that somebody could swim. Think of all the ways that we can make that beach safe. Put in whatever kind of safety equipment is necessary, a ring, a float that somebody can throw out if somebody gets out of trouble. I mean, there are lots of things that we can think about besides putting on a lifeguard. So.
Mr. Chairman, may I say to the board that June 2nd meeting, you should make a decision?
Yes.
Because, you know, one way or the other, because Jim has to, well, Jim has to finalize.
At some point in time, there's no lifeguards to hire. That is correct.
That's exactly right. They've gone, his best pick of the lifeguards, if that's the way that the board is going to go, has gone already.
I mean, the beach is scheduled to open in the middle of June.
One other little tidbit of information which might be helpful.
Please.
Is revenue.
Yes.
How much are we actually expecting? What is it expected to cost the town? And on this page, it'd just be helpful to have some notion.
Well, as you know, he told us last meeting that we received $5,500 in beach passes.
In beach passes.
Revenue from the fees.
So let's have a column for that.
Yeah, exactly.
I will.
What we can expect to get from concessions.
Not just the beach fees, but also the revenue from the concession.
Anticipated revenue.
From the concession, just a, unless the.
I'll put that right in there.
If we're going to make an argument, if those who are opposed to having lifeguards are going to make the argument that we can't afford it, we want to be able to have some rationale for saying that.
Right.
It may be that that's a weak argument.
May I say?
Yes, Paul.
We gave the board exhibits from 2008, and the beach has not made money since that time.
Well, it doesn't matter because it makes money. It's a service to town.
I'm saying it, it hasn't made money.
Okay, other questions, thoughts?
I will try to get those to you.
So again, I would just like to see the comparisons more.
I have it listed as requested.
And we'll bring it up there at the June meeting.
Do we have any information on the number of people that visit the beach per week or in some?
We do a daily attendance sheet. I'll dig them up out of the beach, and I can try to go through and get all the total numbers.
You got some time capsule down there, Barry?
We always do. I mean, all the way back from when there used to be a house on the property. And Lisa Prue used to be the guard.
When you said you have a sheet, does everybody sign it or only the person that buys the ticket?
No, every, for the daily, the daily passes, people come in, everyone comes in, their name is on the list.
And we would know through the town office for the others because they're going to, they have to go to the town office to buy it now, right?
That is correct.
But your list will include both of those, whether they paid or whether they have a pass?
Whether it was a daily or it was a seasonal.
Yeah, that'd be good information to have.
Now, is it on the website that they have to buy their seasonal pass through the town office?
Not that I'm aware of.
It probably should be put on there so that a lot of the public know because somebody's going to go over there to buy a pass and they won't be able to.
And that they need to bring proof of identification. Because otherwise, if they don't have proof, they get charged in our present rate.
I mean, the public has to know, so it's got to be on the website so they can know.
All right. I will do so.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, the next thing on the whole business is emergency management director. As you know, last meeting, we appointed Lee Nichols as the interim emergency management director. We also, as of the last meeting, received the resignation of Paul as the deputy director because of proximity to Ashland. So what we need to discuss tonight is the director. We did check with Homeland Security, and they stated it is okay to have co-emergency management directors. So that possibility exists, and we also have an interested party in Chief Heath.
Paul, did you, am I correct in having, in thinking that I read from you an email saying that Lee was not qualified?
Lee Nichols.
Am I bringing that up?
No, no. Suggested qualifications. Mr. Nichols, I don't know if he's knowledgeable in NIMS and ICS. I believe he is because he's been representing the town since 2010 as our emergency management director, and certainly has been to a number of courses and classes.
So am I incorrect in thinking?
No, I've not stated that Mr. Nichols is not adequately prepared.
Because I thought I had read that. I apologize.
Okay, so everybody has the job description, correct? What would this board like to do?
I would, my.
Go ahead, Paul.
I did say that we've not been in compliance with the EOP, which was accepted in 2010. The annual concurrence is as in the book, so the people's names have not changed, we've not had an annual meeting. And that is in, that's in violation of your own.
It's obvious.
Emergency operations.
This needs to be seriously updated.
Seriously updated. I mean, Dennis Potter is still the chairman of the Board of Selatman. That's not, that's not good.
No, that needs to be updated.
That's not good.
So what's the concept of co-directors? Does that make sense? Is that for it to be Steve and Lee? Is that something we?
It makes some sense, but I think it also questions delineation of leadership.
Yeah.
That is a question that happens when you have co-management.
That is true.
Well, could they be approaching it from different perspectives? I mean, one would take responsibility of certain things.
Yeah.
In a way, different skill sets, we'd think.
But now that I think about that, really, when you're talking about something of an emergency nature, you probably do need somebody to definitively have.
All I can think of is when two ride a horse.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And it really needs to be someone.
You can't have two co-chairmen?
We could. I'm just pointing somebody.
Oh, we can, but you're hearing some discussion about.
Okay, I didn't know if you could. I didn't know if somebody.
Yeah, he checked and said you could.
We checked.
And this appointment is for what period of time?
Good question.
Three years.
Three years.
Look, they're getting along quite well.
Oh, that's a good team.
Wow.
So does that mean you'd be all right with that idea?
I'd really like to hear from either one of you or both of you.
That would be helpful.
You want to both come on up for a minute?
That'd be helpful.
If you want me to speak, I'll speak.
Could you come on up?
Could we stop you, Lee?
Lee, come to the table. Steve, come to the table. So we can talk about this.
You can sit beside him.
What do we say, gentlemen?
Well, from, I talked to Paul Hatch from New Hampshire Emergency Management. There is no rules about having, not having dual. And he said there's two areas that do have co-emergency management directors now. I've done a lot of thinking about it. And quite frankly, with Steve, going to be available more time, we just had a quick discussion over there. And I think we both agreed that we can work together on this. You know, and I have no problem with having a co-director at this point.
And you never had one before?
I'm sorry.
But you've been the sole.
He's been the director. He's been the director.
You've been it.
And there will be no one over the other, obviously. You can't. I mean, if we got a lot of fires going on, he's going to be out in the field. You need somebody inside. If we have a major storm come through, I'm going to be outside, he can.
It's a different one from the one I have?
No, just CIP.
I don't have that.
I don't have that one either.
I got this off, this is the one that I got off.
There more copies?
Is there another copy?
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
This is the one I got.
When did you get that?
In your box.
Oh, you know, I thought it. I couldn't find it.
I opened my email, this is what I got.
It's in your box.
All right.
Because Selatman's fault, and it's three times already. I've got it now.
Okay. I guess I'm talking, huh?
Okay, at 7:00 PM, I'd like to call the select board work session meeting to order at 7:00 PM on May 19, 2014, with roll call vote. Phil Preston.
Here.
Fran Newton.
Here.
Steve Felton.
Here.
Jeanette Stewart.
Here.
And Norm DeWolfe, here. The first thing we're going to do is listen to Tamara Roberts about our audit.
Do you want to come up?
Bring your chair.
Oh, bring your chair.
Did you bring the copy of the audit, please?
I don't know. I printed it out of pocket.
I just put a certain page if I didn't think of it.
I can't take that many pages at work.
Yeah, we should have one for you.
I see the guy's.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good.
That's what I like to see.
All right, fine. I like that official. Thank you. This one I have status draft all over it, so.
One for the treasurer.
Oh, we need one.
One for Brenda. For me.
You want the box? It's in your box.
Thank you. You have one for you to go through, right?
I do.
I can see that hidden.
I'm getting over here for the tone.
I also wanted to say that I've given Paul the copy of the MS5 report, which is your annual financial report that has to go to the state. It's just resigned by the board and submitted to DRA.
Okay.
Normally, when I start looking at these reports, I like to start at the back because it's where the most meaningful information tends to be, and that flows through to the front. So if you look on page 35, not quite all the way to the back, but this is for your general fund, the schedule of estimated and actual revenues. So you see what your estimates were in the first column and what your actual revenues were, and you were about $100,000 more, which is very good, in revenue than what you had originally anticipated. No huge variances. The biggest one is in motor vehicle permits, that you actually got $36,000 more than you had estimated. So there's nothing that really jumps out there. The other fairly large one is the $20,000 for insurance dividends reimbursements caused by PrimeX and the Health Trust all giving back money this past year. So you had some extra insurance dividends coming in. The next page, or the next two pages actually, but start with the first one, is your schedule for appropriations, expenditures, and encumbrances. So this is basically the same thing but for your expenditures. So the first column shows the amounts that were incumbent from 2012.
Two pages of the following.
No, the following.
Yeah, 36.
I'm sorry.
I didn't realize we reversed directions.
I'm sorry. So the first column is what was incumbent from 2012. The next column are your 2013 appropriations, and the following column is your expenditures. And then there's 15,000 or 16,000 almost that you have covered of unspent items to carry forward to spend in the following year. And the final column shows the variance there. Again, you have $114,000 savings in your budget with things that were not spent, and no real huge amounts there. Biggest savings was in police, almost 37,000. Public Works was over expended by about 30,000, almost 30,000, but that, again, a lot of that has to do with the weather and has sort of kind of hard to budget in advance on what you're getting for snow. Other than that, there are no, you know, huge amounts there. And the last page, page 38, the last, that's the last page of the booklet, shows what happens with your surplus or your fund balance for the year. You began 2013 with $701,000. You used $227,000 when the tax rate was set.
Right.
You must have decided to use some of that.
We did.
The savings from the excess revenue and the savings from the budget amounted to The savings from the excess revenue and the savings from the budget amounted to $214,000. So you almost made up what you used. And you ended up with $687,000 as opposed to the $701,000 you started with. So overall, I'd say that's a very good job. You obviously are pretty close when you estimate and budget things as to exactly what you're going to need. If we want to look at pages 33 and 34, I don't know if there's anything particular there you want to go over, but these are your non-major governmental funds. So they're all the other funds, little funds. Most of them had very little activity, other than the library and the trust funds, obviously. But the other small funds, they had the community day in the playground and the day. I don't think they had any change. No, they were all the same in the prime year. Conservation Commission increased a little bit, but nothing major. So it's not, it's not really a whole lot there that normally holds too much interest for anyone. If you go back again out of page 32, back just a little bit, the thing there that I like to point out to people is the difference between the budgetary fund balance and the GAAP fund balance. Basically, there are two different fund balances that you look at because GAAP, which is set by the Government Economic Standards Board, requires that you report a certain way. And they basically say that any revenue that isn't collected and received in cash within 60 days of the end of the year has to be deferred, and you can't recognize that revenue. DRA says the opposite. They say they don't want you to defer your taxes that aren't collected. So on a budgetary basis, your fund balance, there is the $687,000 that we just went over on the last page. On a GAAP basis, which is up in the front in Exhibit 3, your fund balance is $292,000 because it's $395,000 of deferred tax revenue, which is, you know, you obviously will always get your tax revenue because you have liens on it, but the timing is subject to some difference.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep.
So the next, the next page is basically what we just went over. If you keep going back with it to page 31, it's basically just the two combined, those and the expenditures combined, to give you that assigned fund balance of the $687. I don't think there's any particular notes, other than on page 28, the note at the bottom of the page, Note 3E, on the restatement in the beginning, that position. I wanted to just point that out. I think it might have been used last year, Steve, you asked me the question about the landfill.
Right.
And the engineers subsequently to that changed their estimate.
Right.
So rather than run that all through 2013, where they decreased it so much, and show your sanitation expenses being a huge negative expense, I restated the, just the governmental activities in that position. So last year, we had reported at $10,155,000. This year, I added back $224,000 to bring it up to $10,279,000.
Okay. Well, I follow a question on that piece. How does that relate to the amount that you set aside for your post-closure expenses each year? That was $14,000.
It goes in-
And it's still $14,000.
Does it, does it stay at that same amount even though the balance has gone down? Um, I'm not sure.
You know what I'm talking about?
No, I'm not sure what you mean by what you set aside unless you're putting-
Okay. If you look at, let's see what page it is. Hold on a second.
Oh, I see what you're talking about on page 8.
Yes, if you, well, if you look at page 3, for example, you see where the accrued landfill post-closure care costs are $168,000.
Right.
And the accrued landfill post-closure care costs due within a year are $14,000.
Right.
Wouldn't that number go down if your total balance went down? That you accrue for a year?
What it's talking about basically is we ask the engineer to give us what the estimate will be for the post-closure care by year. So if they say every year, you know, they say it's going to cost approximately $14,000 a year, then we just set up the amount that should be accrued as one year's worth, basically, is $14,000. And then the balance is considered non-current, only because that would be the amount. If, if nothing else changed, and they don't change their estimate again-
Yeah.
Then each year, $14,000 would, would be considered current, and the bulk would be considered non-current.
And that same $14,000 was being set aside when it was $400 and something thousand?
Right, because the estimate last year, the difference in what they changed from last year's estimate-
Yeah.
-was all in the actual closure, rather than in post-closure care, I think. I think they were, they had a huge amount that they were calling, you know, $224,000 that they were saying was for-
So those two are not related? The yearly and the total?
They're, they're, they are in the end, really, I guess, is the best way of saying it. They still, they have not changed their estimate of what it's going to cost you per year-
Okay.
-to do the post-closure care. They're still estimating it would be approximately $14,000 a year.
Okay.
Which is why that hasn't changed.
Okay.
That's from the engineers, isn't it?
Yes, we get that information.
Emma and Garrett, yeah.
Right. So other than that, like I said, the other notes, I don't think are particularly anything that you, obviously, you'll read over them. I don't-
I have a question on page 27.
Sure.
Just making sure I understand it. Where it lists the, oh, no, wait a minute, 27, hold on. Where we have listed the outstanding taxes, property tax due, which is page 22. So if I, if I understand this right, if I look at the net tax receivable of 633, 944-
Right.
-that includes all of the property tax due, with the exception of whatever may be due from 2013 taxes?
No, the 2013 is there. That's the $480,000.
But is that levy of 2013, isn't, that doesn't apply to 2012's taxes?
No, that's, that was the levy from this past, would have been due this past December. This $480 of that still was not collected as of December 31st. And then the other amounts-
How does that relate to the $395 that you said?
The $395 is not, let me take that back. The, the total amount here, the net 633 is what, is the exact receivable. It doesn't include any amounts that's been deferred. It's the amount that has been billed and has not yet been collected for all those particular levies, with an allowance of $50,000 for potential abatements and things like that, that you may not be collecting.
And how do you arrive at that number?
Normally, this year, we discussed it with your assessor, who was in the office while we were there, and your tax collector, as to, you know, we look at what's already been abated at the time we do the audit. That, obviously, we take into consideration. And then an estimate. Sometimes you've had, I know a couple of years ago, it was $100,000 because you had a big case with a golf course or something.
Right.
We cut that back to $50,000.
So that's primarily abatements, though?
It's, it's abatements and amounts that, possible abatements before the end of the year. We usually round it up a little bit because you'd rather have it go that way than have more abatements.
So, so the levy of each of these tax liens on, in 2012, 2011, 2010, 2012's levy is for taxes not paid through the end of 2012, not from the previous year?
No, it's for 2013. It's the taxes for 2012 that still have not been paid at the end of 2013. The tax liens at that point, which is why it says I'm deemed under tax-
Why, okay. So doesn't, this $485.64, which is a levy of 2013-
Right.
-that was levied in 2013 based on 2012's taxes not paid?
No, that's, those are your tax bills that went out this past fall.
That still have not been paid.
That had not been collected as of December 31st.
So that's separate from 2012 through 2009?
And again, then how, so what's the difference between the $480 and the $395?
The $395 does not affect the receivable at all. The $395 just, excuse me, affects the revenue. It's deferred and taken out of the revenue that you recognize. It doesn't affect your receivable.
So you're saying that $395,000 of the taxes that were due in 2013 were not anticipated to be paid by the end of February?
Well, were not paid.
Were not paid.
We would be late enough so that we had, actually had Patsy run us an uncollected list. But it's not, it also includes these other amounts from other years. It's not all related to just 2013.
The $395.
Right.
Okay.
The $395 is, is all the uncollected taxes that were not collected as of the end of February.
So that's from 2012, 2011?
Right.
Okay.
So you started out, I mean, at the end of December, you had $633,000 uncollected. At the end of February, you had $395,000.
Got it. Okay.
So you go way back to 2009, and that's how you got that?
Yeah.
Right. We had her run it, we had Patsy run us a list from all years of anything that was still due as of the end of December, and again, as of the end of February.
Okay.
And tested.
And so last year, that 633 was 534.
Right.
And, okay, so it's gone from 482 to 534 to 633. I'm just looking at the last three years, just to see, to kind of get a sense of-
Yeah, probably because we keep adding years to that.
Right. And you also could have, depending on when your tax bills went out, too, if they went later one year than the other, like a week later, then you might have that many more people that hadn't paid us at the end of the year.
Right. Okay.
Yep.
Were there any other questions on the notes? Pages, well, just keep coming back through the exhibits. So pages 12 and 13 are the private purpose trusts and the agency funds. Those are funds that per governmental GAAP are considered by duchery funds in that they're funds that the town, well, the agency funds are funds that the town is holding by law. It's the trustees of trust funds. Those would be funds that probably belong to your school or your precinct that you have no control over them, but you are required, or your trustees are required to hold them. Private purpose trusts are trust funds that don't benefit the town in any way. Again, you're required to hold them, but they benefit other entities or individuals. They're usually scholarship monies or things like that that are used to benefit an individual. But again, your trustees are required to hold them.
Okay.
The, the next three coming backwards on pages 9, 10, and 11 are your enterprise funds. Those I did not audit. Those are audited by someone else.
Right.
Let's just get put in here because they are part of the town. And in my opinion, we will see that explained that those are audited by someone else.
Yep. And these numbers are based on their audit?
These came right out of their audit.
Okay.
I copied these exhibits right out of their audit, so. And then if you turn back to page 7, again, this is on a GAAP basis. This is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. So I mean, basically, the differences that you will see here are due to those deferred taxes. Your tax revenue will be different here than what it was back in the back of the report when we looked at it because, and again, your fund balance is only 312 here in the general fund as opposed to 600 something that it is on a budgetary basis.
Okay.
And on page 5 is the balance sheet, again, for your general fund and then all your other funds aggregated. And again, like you see, you have quite a bit of cash. I think you had quite a bit last year, too. I think there was a significant change in the amount of cash. The taxes are there. You have this large intergovernmental payable. That's the amount due to the school district over the following six months or to the school districts. And you have two districts here about. So you recognize as a liability at December 31st the amount that you pay from January 1st through the end of June.
So the intergovernmental payable is probably, is the schools?
Right. There may be a $500 or something in there that goes to the state for dog fees and things like that sometimes. But the bulk of that is the school, and it is explained back in the notes.
Yep.
Okay.
And then pages 3 and 4 are, these are the statements of net position, the statement of activities. These are on another basis of accounting, again, so they don't relate directly to the GAAP statements. These are aggregated every fund into basically two categories, governmental activities and business type activities. The business type activities, again, those are just your enterprise funds. So those aren't anything that you people really deal with. But the governmental activities basically is aggregating together all your funds, including your trust funds and your special revenue funds, and then putting it all together and following an accrual basis of accounting as opposed to modified accrual. So on the accrual basis of accounting, we don't worry about deferring anything. If you've billed it, if it's due to you, it goes on here. So you're, you won't, you won't see the deferred revenue here. There is a very small amount of $600. That's actually collections of property taxes that are going to be applied to the next year's level. People overpaid, and rather than wanting the money refunded, they just said hold on to it for the 2014 taxes. That gets reported as annualization.
Okay.
But the, the rest of the $395,000 has gone away from these schedules because these are on the accrual basis. So I mean, if you're interested in trying to follow these to the GAAP, then on pages 6 and 8, there is a reconciliation of the fund statements to the governmental activities. So other than that, I really didn't have anything else. Your opinion is pretty straightforward. It's pretty much the same as last year again. And we, we had no issue in performing the audit. I didn't, I didn't write up a measure, right, because I really didn't have anything basically to say. But then, I mean, we were a little concerned because you switched bookkeepers a couple of times during the year. And that sometimes can result in an eschphor audit as to, but I didn't meet the one you had in the middle. But Brenda seemed to be doing a really good job and seemed to have a good handle on it when we were there.
Okay.
So I think you, you know, you've been a good person there.
Excellent.
So I don't know if anybody had any other questions?
Any other questions?
I just have a question as to, is there anything that we can do to try to get the audit done earlier in the calendar year?
I can look at my schedule and try to do that. Part of-
Is it anything that we are not, is there any?
No, no. This year has been a hard year for my firm, only in that we had a couple of changes in personnel. And so we're training new people who normally, we try to pass out, like writing up this report once we leave, share that out with staff. This year, I've had to write up all my own, and that makes it more time-consuming.
Yeah.
But we have two new people that were just hired since we were here, actually. Both seem very promising, and I would hope that by next year, we'll have several other people who could write up a report, and I won't have to do it all myself. That, and we've also had some technical issues with computer system and changing to our server.
Yeah.
And I got a new computer that Dell has replaced twice already, and I've had it for like four months. So we've had some issues on that as well. There was no problems here, nothing that, I hope there were no problems here, nothing that we could do. And we can certainly, we certainly will make every effort to get it out faster this year. I apologize for the delay.
If it was ideal, when could we get it, if everything went well?
If we did it around the same time, which I think is, is late February, I would hope to get it out to you by the first of April, so that you have about a month to take care of it, but.
And when is this due?
We put it in, yeah, the MS-5. I put it in for not, for May 1st, so we-
We're already tardy.
Well, you are when you are. I mean, they ask you for an estimate as to when you think you're going to get it. Basically, to be completely honest with you, and knowing, dealing with DRA, along with everyone else, as long as they have this one, they're ready to set your tax rate, which won't be for several more months. They, you know, that's usually all they worry about.
Satisfactory to them.
Right. I mean, they may have asked if you gave them an early date, you know, where is it? But they're not going to do anything with it, really, until, until you get ready to set the tax rate.
They ask, when, when did you have the audit done? And we said the end of February. So they put in, so, so May 1st is good, isn't it? You know, so you go, yeah, it's good.
And normally, I would hope that it would have been, and again, I apologize.
Because this is, this is only one of 294 that they've got to look at, so.
Right. And we, and I have sent a, sent a copy of this report over today to DRA, so they now have a copy of your audit report as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Have a nice summer, and we'll be too.
See you next year.
Thank you.
Okay, so should we pass this around?
Yep. The front page is the signature page, just here. For all five selected.
Today's date, Friday, 9th of July.
Please. I have given, if I may say, while I've examined, signed it, I've given Martine a copy of the disc. We asked for a disc, and Martine will put it on the website.
The audit?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Excellent, okay.
So that's, I've got permission to put it on the website. That's good. And I'll give a copy to treasurer, to Brenda. And we don't need a copy, do we? We need a copy of the one.
Sorry, Phil. Can you see my taken up yet?
No, it's yours.
Yeah, it is, sorry.
Perhaps you can leave a note, we'll do that tomorrow.
Paul is on the one page?
For signature, yes, yeah.
Okay, all set.
Thank you very much.
Next would be old business. And first, our old business is we've appointed Phil and Fran as a subcommittee to look at the mission, the vision, the statement, and come back with some.
Did everybody get the email that I sent out this afternoon?
We did.
Okay.
And I will say that Fran did a better job of explaining my position.
I figured if I said it wrong, Phil, you would correct me, but. So that's kind of where we stand. I mean, Phil and I basically agreed to disagree and we leave it to everybody else to make comments. So I don't know if you had it.
I haven't really had a chance to read it, but I just.
Okay. Well, I did make copies for everybody if you didn't get it.
I did have copies.
Okay.
I just haven't had a chance to do it.
So this is the one that Paul had?
That's the one that, yeah, that's the one that Paul had done.
And this is the one that you did?
Yeah, and that's the one that I had done. And I used the model that Paul set up because I thought it was appropriate, but I felt that some of the wording needed to be tweaked and changed. You know, and again, my perspective was that I see this as a statement of who we are and what we stand for. It's, you know, how we do our business, not what we do so much. And, you know, Phil, you can.
Okay, well, I'll have my piece.
You can have your piece.
I looked at a number of towns surrounding here on their websites. Town, there are surrounding towns, plus I went to Hanover, Littleton, North Conway, Woodstock, Tamworth, towns that are sort of tourist oriented towns, most of them. They don't have any mission statement, they don't have any vision statement. The only thing I could find was Vaconia said, "The city is dedicated to providing the best possible service to our residents, businesses, and visitors," which seems a little tepid to me. That's the only one that had a mission statement. I assume that if there had been one on those websites, it would have been prominently displayed on the homepage of the organization. My feeling is that the responsibilities of the board of selectmen is pretty well proscribed by RSAs. What you can do, you have to have authority to do it from the state. And that, everything else is you're prevented from doing by the Constitution. So it gives a very narrow window in terms of what you can do and what you cannot do. And my feeling is that obviously we have an obligation to follow the law, in particular the right to know law. We don't have an option of doing anything but follow that law. And I just feel that mission statement is something that doesn't apply to a town. I think it's fine to have, to state your position as to your attitude or how you want to operate, how an individual wants to operate. I think that's fine. I think that's more of a policy than a mission statement. But that's my opinion. And I think the vision statement, I never saw a vision statement. I finally decided, well, maybe the place for a vision statement is in the master plan. So I looked at a few master plans and indeed, they do have, and some of them, I have one that's a very verbose, one, ours happens to be very short. But it seems to me the planning board is the organization that has been charged with the responsibility of what is it, what do we want the town to look like and how are we going to get there? And it seems to me a vision statement would be an appropriate page one of the master plan, which I would think could be beefed up a little bit in terms of ashroom. But I don't think we need a separate vision statement. So that's my pitch.
Steve, thoughts?
I guess, yep. I actually have thoughts on both sides of that, those statements. I do think the RSAs do say what the select board is responsible for and like most RSAs, it's fairly, it's specific, but it's also very.
Subject to interpretation.
There's a lot of gray in there, I guess. So I guess what a, and I've thought a lot about this because just through, you know, business and things, we were involved in vision and mission statements in a number of different ways. And what it, I think is designed to do is to take the general and narrow it down to maybe the specific things that you as an organization want to make sure that you're working towards as you govern the town. And so I would say we need to, we would need to look at these and decide, are these all values and missions that we as a board strive to execute? And if they are, the other thing about mission statements are, and visions are, and values are, what you put on paper is what you.